Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out? Thank you. Then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Raithel.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
Eric Kozlowski.
Here.
Leary.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. We have an additional information transmittal for item 10 and a revised staff report for item 11 on tonight's agenda. A copy of both have previously been provided to you and they should be on the table in the back as well.
Thank you. That takes us to Business from the Floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, but please understand that we cannot take action or deliberate on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak now during Business from the Floor or on a future agenda item later today, you could please fill out a blue card, hand it to Lieutenant Verhalem over here, and the clerk will call you up at the appropriate time. So we do have some requests from Business from the Floor.
Yeah, you have two requests to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. First will be Tracy Stafford, and Tracy will be followed by Ruth Anderson. So Tracy, come on down, and Ruth, you can be ready. You'll be next in three minutes.
Yep, just a reminder, we give everyone three minutes to speak, so, short and sweet. Right there at the center. There you go.
Okay, is there a timer? Oh, there it is. Okay.
Oh, we got them all. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Well, I am Tracy Stafford, and I'm the self-appointed executive director for the Juneteenth Festival at Black Miners Bar. And self-appointed means basically I'm a volunteer. We're all volunteers. It's a community-driven event. And often where people are asking, well, what is it? Why did we change the name? What is Juneteenth? What is the big deal, right? So we like to come out and just sort of share what it's truly about. Now, we know what the Fourth of July is, right? You know, that is where our great country earned its independence. And we all celebrate it, and we all love it, and we all eat a little too much and go on about our lives, right? And then there is Juneteenth, which occurred on June 19th in 1865. And that was when all Americans were freed. So our country was freed on the Fourth of July, but all Americans were notified of their freedom on June 19th, 1865, when the last of the enslaved in Galveston, Texas were notified two years after they had been freed, that they actually were. So we celebrate Fourth of July, and we've always celebrated as a black community, Juneteenth. But the reality is that this is a celebration that we should all be a part of. Juneteenth, again, is when all Americans were freed in this great country that earned its independence on the Fourth of July. So that is why we celebrate. And with Black Miners Bar, there's a lot of discussion about that, you know? Why did we change the name? And isn't Negro Bar Negro Bar? Isn't that Spanish? What's the big deal, right? And many don't really understand the history. We know that that's where the black miners mined, gold mines. Many don't understand that that was the first black settlement in California, and it was in 1849, which was decades before the Emancipation Proclamation. So we're not even free to travel freely, to own property, any of that. And they came here and were able to build lives and build community here. And it's so important. And so with the name change, and I'm, and trigger warning, I'm going to say a word, you know, originally it was Nigger Bar. So let's make no mistake that, make no mistake, that this is what it was called, and this is what it's still called. That's what I heard when I first came here, right, by some folks. So this is not something that came from the Spanish community. This is where black miners mined, and that's what it was called, until 18, or 1965, with the federal mandate that required that the name be changed on state parks to Negro Bar. And we've evolved, and we've changed, and now finally, it's a third-year anniversary where it has been renamed to something that really honors those who started their lives here, and that is Black Miners Bar. So that is the background, and Ruth is going to tell you more about the event. But we hope that you support. We really need donations. It's quite an expensive event, but we make it happen.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
I remember it was hot, hot, hot last year.
It was. We are, we are still dehydrated from last year.
You're going to get some better weather this year, yeah.
So it's only four to eight this year because we're like, we are not doing that again at 10:00 in the morning. So, thank you very much for your time.
Yep.
Okay, our next speaker is Ruth Anderson, and Ruth will be followed, I believe, by Margie Donovan online.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council and members of the city of Folsom. My name is Ruth Anderson, and I am proud to be a citizen here for 15 years. We chose it after breakfast at Karen's, not knowing anyone, and we are delighted to be members of this city. But I want to invite everyone to a party. And Juneteenth is a party, and it is right here in our neighborhood. So you don't have to go to San Francisco or anywhere else to experience the joy of when you come down the stairs and we're on the beach at Black Miners Bar, and you see the stage is...
Ruth, sorry, we're trying to pick this up on the microphone for the people who are watching it webcast.
So the stage, when you come down the stairs, the stage is kind of right on the water, and the entertainment is nonstop. There is drumming, and that includes us if you wanted to practice African drumming. And then at night, last year, we had a Tina Turner tribute band that was awesome as, as it gets to be night, you know, that wonderful time before it's dark. And there's vendors and food trucks, and there's people on kayaks, there's horseback riding. What else can I say? It is a blast. There's stuff for kids to do, and it is for the whole community. So no matter what you have planned for Saturday, June 28th, cancel it or bring them along from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And may I say, it's for free. You do have to pay the state park. It's a $10 entrance fee, but Tracy and her team has done an amazing job of getting sponsors to pay for all this stuff. So why not enjoy this community event? And my job is also to get different vendors to offer gifts for people that are coming. And I just got another gift certificate from Ace Hardware this afternoon, and just restaurants. So I can't say enough about this wonderful community event, and really ask you all to join us again from 4:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, June 28th.
Did I forget something?
23 seconds. May I finish?
Of course.
Add to it. Okay, 19 seconds. Okay, we want to make sure that we also talk about that there's horseback riding and there are, it's a kid's zone.
Beer garden?
Beer garden, beer garden.
Beer garden.
There's beer garden, there's horseback riding, there's kayaking, the usual water sports that we have there.
Educational exhibits.
We have the Buffalo Soldiers out there with campgrounds. You've got to be mining for gold, and I don't even know what because I'm too busy running around. But please, please show up. This is a community event that we would love everyone to participate in.
Are you just a little excited about this, Tracy?
I'm tired. We have a talk show going now.
Thank you all very much for coming out. And if you'd like to stay for our budget discussion, you're welcome to, but if you want to leave, we'll understand.
Okay, our, okay, our next speaker will be Margie Donovan. Margie, I think you're muted, so go ahead and unmute yourself.
Am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Hello, Mayor Aquino and honorable council members. I'm Margie Donovan. I'm a resident of the city of Folsom. I come once again to this council meeting to express my very serious concerns about Sack RT Go, which we farmed out Folsom's stage line and dialerized to Regional Transit. Regional Transit is having some very serious issues with their new software. While I've battled my battle and I've won my battle for me and my rides are on time, I'm hearing more and more from the residents of Folsom that they're missing doctor's appointments and having to pay for missed appointments, that the buses are late outside of their 30-minute window. This concerns me gravely. Some of you may know that I went to CBS and I was on Channel 13 after missing a doctor's appointment and having to pay $100 fee for a missed appointment. This is unacceptable. RT has the second-worst software in the transit industry for its Sack RT Go system for elderly and people with disabilities. The worst was what they had. This is very problematic. We're getting drivers in this town that weren't committed to be in this town. I almost fell and hit my head the other day on a bus because the driver failed to tell me someone was sitting in the front seat. As far as I'm concerned, this is a crisis for residents that are elderly and with disabilities. I know we have representatives on this, on the RT board. I can't speak enough how serious of an issue this is, and I'd like the city council to address this outside of our representatives to the board. We have got to get our residents through their medical appointments on time. It is unfair that we have to pay for missed appointments because the buses are late. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Margie.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker will be Sharon Kendall.
Is this working tonight? The projector?
Yes. But Stacy, can you turn it on for her, please? Sorry. Um, yeah. It needs to be turned on on the top corner. Sorry, Sharon, we weren't prepared for that you would do a presentation, so it's going to take us a second. Hang on. You might have to help her focus it. It just takes it a second.
Okay, good evening, Sharon.
You should be able to zoom out.
Is there a way to zoom out?
Yeah, there's a dial at the top there. Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Stacy. So, my name is Sharon Kendall.
Into the microphone, please, so the camera picks it up. Thank you, Sharon.
My name is Sharon Kendall. I'm a longtime resident of Folsom, California, and I'm here tonight to discuss parks' maintenance deficit. I hear it a lot, parks' maintenance deficit. But do people really understand what that means? To me, it means public safety hazard. Because, for example, in Davis Park, which this picture is in Davis Park, we have Bradford pear trees there. And the Bradford pear trees live between 15 and 25 years. These trees are 27 years old, and they have all of the signs of being diseased. The city arborist has recommended a year ago to remove them. And I, as a resident that used that park, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that. So this is a picture across a limb from a Bradford pear tree, and it's over the sidewalk. If you look closer to this limb, this is what you see. Would you like to walk underneath this limb tomorrow? I don't think so. The other thing is, is that here's a picture of a tree stump. In a way, you can see that the bark is definitely affected, but you cannot see what's inside that stump. It's basically hollow. It's not a, it's actually not a stump, but it's a trunk. And it's basically hollow, and it's been infected by fungus. If you try to push on the tree, it stands. But that's not where the problem is. The problem is, is when you look up into the limbs, the limbs of the Bradford pear tree are very soft, and they're known for dropping their limbs. In Davis, California, they just had a lawsuit settled this year for $24 million regarding a woman that was in a park in Davis. The limb fell down, and she was killed in front of her daughter. I...
I need you to wrap it up, please, Sharon.
Encourage you. Whatever you have looked at as far as increasing the budget for parks and recreation, that you triple it. Because this is only one park, and this is only a couple of trees. I've been taking pictures of these trees for years. I could probably call them by name.
Thank you for coming out. I hope you'll stick around for the budget discussion.
So I really want to encourage you, public, let's see, parks' management deficit means public safety hazard.
Got it. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, this takes you to your consent calendar.
Okay. Anybody have any item they want to pull? I'm not hearing anything, so we'll entertain a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Council members Raithel.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, next item, please.
All right, that takes you to your new business, item number 10. This is resolution number 11399, a resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report for all the landscaping and lighting districts for fiscal year 2526 and setting the public hearing.
Good evening, Jameson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We'll get this up here. I'm Jameson Larson, Senior Management Analyst for the Parks and Recreation Department. I will be presenting information regarding the LNL District's Preliminary Engineers Report. This report incorporates all 30 LNL districts into a single report. Our recommendations are that the council adopt Resolution 11399, the resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report. Staff also recommends that the council direct the engineer of record to include a table within the final engineer's report to reflect revenues and expenses to further highlight operational deficits, as well as the total district account balance as of April 30th, 2025. Annual operational deficits are funded from the city's pooled cash account, and any reserve fund balance deficits are assigned to the specific district and is the ongoing financial responsibility of that district. Operating deficits can be reduced by annual reserve fund collections or a reduction in services provided to that district. So what is a lighting and landscape, or a landscape and lighting district, rather? As you can see here, an LNL assessment district is a funding mechanism which is intended to pay for landscaping, lighting, and other specified services within a district. When a new development project is in the planning phases, the project is conditioned with creating a funding mechanism to pay for maintenance of common areas. Common funding mechanisms include community facilities district, as is seen in much of the Folsom Ranch area, homeowners associations, or a landscaping and lighting district. Beyond the legal definition seen here, an LNL district maintains those quality-of-life features that make each district unique and inviting. For instance, the waterfall in American River Canyon, the art in Natomas Station, or the monument signage in Willow Creek Estates South, and the open spaces throughout the districts. These are all assets maintained by the district and provide a benefit to the residents within that district. This graphic here shows the location of all 30 LNLs here in Folsom. All LNLs were created pursuant to the LNL Act of 1972 and the California Constitution. The districts within the city vary in size from 10 to 2,370 units, and the majority of the districts in Folsom were formed prior to Prop 218 in 1996, and therefore do not have an escalator built into account for increased costs over time. The engineer's report process is a three-step process. Step one is a resolution directing the preparation of an engineer's report. This step was completed on February 25th of this year. Step two is a resolution approving the preliminary engineer's report. That is what we are here to do today. Step two is normally a consent item. However, we've received feedback during our community engagement meetings that residents were not aware of the process and their district's financial health. And in response, we wanted to provide this in a public forum so everyone can have the same information. Step three is a resolution approving the final engineer's report and holding a public hearing. This is planned for July 8th of 2025 here at the council meeting. We have an additional step that we complete between steps one and three, where the municipal landscape services manager presents the preliminary budgets to all landscape and lighting district advisory committee members to allow them to review and provide comments. This was completed on May 15th of this year. Here we have the listing of all 30 districts here within the city of Folsom. And each district is unique in the number and type of amenities that are maintained. The picture here is of the American River Canyon North Waterfall, which is an asset maintained by their district. However, common assets include landscaping, street lighting, sound walls, open spaces, mini parks, and monument signage. This graph here shows the California Construction Cost Index and the Consumer Price Index for the period of time between 1990 and 2025. As you can see, it takes $2.76 in 2025 to have the same buying power as $1 in 1990, when a lot of these districts were created. Due to the cost increases over time, districts without an inflationary adjustment have struggled to keep up with the rising cost of services on their static assessment. Here's a high-level overview of all 30 LNL districts. The total expenses for all but the highlighted districts represent the baseline costs to provide the current level of service. The current level of service has stepped down with each of the past two landscape maintenance contracts due to the rising cost of that service. So if we look at this table, it'll be presented a couple different ways throughout this presentation. You have the district name, and then going across to the right, you have the assessment revenue, the total expenses, revenue less expenses, and the actual fund balance on April 30th of this year. The two that are highlighted here have enhancement projects going on. They have a healthy budget and are able to do the enhancement projects to their landscaping. So American River Canyon North has $160,000 set aside to do a landscape enhancement project on American River Canyon Drive on your way up to the waterfall. And Prairie Oaks Ranch Number Two recently went through the Prop 218 process, and they have $151,000 set aside to do a landscape enhancement project on Blue Ravine in Rusi. The districts listed here are currently, they currently have a negative account balance, and their annual costs provide the basic level of maintenance exceeds their annual assessment. We'll look at each of these districts in more detail in the slides to follow. Staff's current prioritization plan has Briggs Ranch, Broadstone 1, 2, and 4, and Natomas Station going out for Prop 218 ballot process in the coming fiscal year, and Hanford Cross and Cobble Ridge 2/ Reflections 2 would undergo the Prop 218 process in fiscal year 2627. In simple terms, the Prop 218 process is a legal process in which a new district is presented to the property owners to vote on how they want their district to be maintained. It is a three-step process that starts with the resolution initiating proceedings and ordering an engineer's report. Next, the preliminary engineer's report is presented to the council and the ballot proceedings ordered and setting of a public hearing to tabulate the ballots. The final step is the tabulation of ballots, public hearing, and a resolution declaring the results. There is a legally required 45-day period between steps two and three, and a fast-track approach to the proceedings takes a minimum of two months to complete. Here is a high-level overview of those five districts, which I have highlighted in yellow. You can see that, starting from the right, the account balance is negative on these, and then the annual costs are exceeding the revenue for each one of these as well. So now we'll look at each individual district. Each district will have a similar slide to this with the table showing some important information, including the actuals for fiscal year '22 through '24, and the budgeted assessment revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '25 and '26. Additionally, there is information in the gray box which shows the actual account balance on April 30th of 2025, the year which the deficit began, and the number of total single-family equivalent units in the lighting landscape district. Each of these slides will also have a breakdown to show what an average payback amount would look like over a 10-year period. This is for reference only. 10 years was used for consistency across all slides, but the payback timeline can be set by the council. Briggs Ranch has a negative account balance of $218,000. They are projected to have an operational deficit of $125,000 this coming fiscal year. This includes $70,000 in planned spending to complete the Prop 218 process. The district has approximately 659 single-family equivalent units, so that $218,000 equates to about $332 per unit. If the deficit was paid back over a 10-year period, the cost per single-family equivalent would be approximately $33 annually, or $2.75 per month on average. This is one of the districts that's prioritized for outreach this coming fiscal year.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
And this will apply to all of them. So you're giving us a 10-year period, $33, for example, on this one, to be paid, that could pay back the deficit. Is that on top of the regular fee that would continue the maintenance, or is this just to pay back the deficit, or does that include also continuing the maintenance?
So that portion would be in addition to the maintenance. They're currently running a deficit of, if we take away that $70,000 for this year, they're running a pretty healthy deficit of $55,000 annually just to complete the basic levels of maintenance. So that $33 would be to pay back. In addition, they would need to right-size their budget to pay for the minimum level of maintenance, as well as set aside funds for future replacements of assets when they reach end of life.
So to remain healthy, if this fixes it, to remain healthy, their assessment would be higher than $33 a year?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I...
Can I, I just want to clarify something, since I've been deep in this whole thing since January because of my district. So each district that has a deficit would be assessed over a 10-year period, perhaps longer if there's some difference in the annual cost. But each district that is in a deficit would also have to raise their basic maintenance rate annually, so that they would increase the income to cover the cost of maintenance that they're not able to meet currently.
Yes, ideally, they would raise the rate to meet the needs of annual maintenance, long-term planning, and paying back the deficit. The other side of the coin is you do not increase the assessment, and you have to reduce expenditures to a point where you can pay back that assessment on the existing $80,000 they are bringing in. And so it would include substantial cuts to services at that point.
Yeah, I think that's the piece that's been confusing for people, is that, you know, if they don't want to raise the annual assessment, that services will be cut back, such as reduced mowing or pruning or repair of, you know, things that can be deferred for repair.
Yes, we've already reduced the maintenance to a level that is the minimum level we can really do without just starting to cut certain maintenance items out of the budget.
Right. And then each district is going to be... Right, and then each district is going to be notified in advance of the cuts? Or have they already taken place and are proceeding as costs of maintenance and repairs goes up and income remains flat?
So I'll be getting into that a little bit in the future slides. However, our recommendation will be to continue to provide the level of services budgeted in this engineers' report for this coming fiscal year while we complete outreach for the majority of these districts, with the exception of Natomas Station, which recently went through the Prop 218 process and the measure failed by a very narrow margin.
Okay, thanks, Jamison.
All right, and then we have Hanaford Cross. They currently have a negative account balance of $51,000. They are projected to have an operational deficit of $15,000 in the coming fiscal year. They have 103 single-family equivalent units, and that $51,000 equates to around $499 per unit. If we were to pay that back over a 10-year period, it would be approximately $49, $50 annually per single-family equivalent or $416 a month on average. This district is planned for Prop 218 proceedings in fiscal year '26, '27. Next, we have Cobble Ridge 2 Reflections. They have a negative account balance of $90,000. They are projected to have an operational deficit of $18,000 this coming fiscal year to provide the base levels of service. They have approximately 389 single-family equivalent units. That $90,000 equates to approximately $231 per unit. If the deficit were paid back over a 10-year period, the cost per single-family equivalent would be approximately $23 per unit annually or $1.93 per month. This district, again, is prioritized for Prop 218 outreach in fiscal years '26, '27.
Jamison, can I ask a clarification?
Yes.
So the 70 grand outreach cost was only included for Briggs Ranch?
So it will be included for Briggs Ranch and Broadstone. And then Natomas Station also has outreach within that. However, their engineers' report has already been created once recently and just will require updating, so it will be substantially less to do the outreach and balloting for that district in particular.
Got it, so Broadstone, Briggs Ranch in the next year, and then the other three?
Yes, we'll be doing Natomas Station, Briggs Ranch, Broadstone this year, Hanaford Cross, and Cobble Ridge the following year.
Thank you.
Broadstone 1 and 2 is the original district, so this slide's a little different. It's got two separate districts there. Broadstone 4 is an overlay district of Broadstone 1 and 2, so it's the same residents paying for the same assets. So it's easier to look at this combined to get the full picture of the health of the district. Broadstone 4 was approved in 2015 with a higher level of assessment for a five-year period. And then it was reduced to a lower-level assessment that is unable to keep up with the rising costs. When you look at both districts together, they have a negative account balance of $597,000. They have a projected operational deficit of $234,000 this year to provide the base level of service, plus setting $70,000 aside to complete the outreach. The district has approximately 25, or 2,531, single-family equivalents, so that $597,000 equates to approximately $236 per unit. So you can kind of see that when we looked at Hanaford Cross, they have a lot less units. Their deficit is much smaller as well, but when you're spreading it across as many as Broadstone, the cost per individual unit is much less. If the deficit were paid back over a 10-year period, the cost per single-family equivalent on average would be $23.63 or $1.97 per month. And like I said, this one is prioritized for outreach this fiscal, this coming fiscal year. And then Natomas Station, they have a negative account balance of $729,000. They are projected to have an operational deficit of $62,000. This includes $70,000 in planned spending to complete the Prop 218 process. The engineers' report was completed before I was able to get a bid back from the consultant. So due to this district already going through the process and having an engineers' report that needs to be updated rather than created from scratch, we do not anticipate that full $70,000 being necessary. We don't anticipate it to cost more than $10,000. So before the final engineers' report is presented to you, we intend to reduce the expenditures by $60,000 within that district, which would leave an operational deficit of just under $3,000 for this coming fiscal year. This district recently had the opportunity to complete the Prop 218 process, and a majority protest existed with the vote at 49.65% for and 50.35% against the district. The budget for this year reflects cuts of approximately $100,000, which includes removing all landscape maintenance services. The district has approximately 1,857 single-family equivalent units, and the $729,000 equates to approximately $392 per unit. If it were paid back over a 10-year period, it would be approximately $33 annually per unit or $2.75 per month. This district is prioritized for Prop 218 outreach in the coming fiscal year, and staff intends to bring a resolution to the council on June 24th to initiate proceedings for a new balloting process in Natomas Station. So this next meeting, we will have something in front of you for that. And so I will be asking in the recommendations and direction slide, this question. Do we continue the base level of service during outreach and balloting for all of those that aren't highlighted here? And then also, I will be asking, do we continue to provide the same level of service to Natomas Station? Or do we reduce the levels of service to what we have budgeted currently, which is removal of landscape maintenance? Here's a comparison of the average costs per single-family equivalent in each of the 30 lighting and landscape districts. Cobble Ridge and Natomas Valley, so Cobble Ridge and Cobble Hills Ridge are two different districts, so they have two different budget. So Cobble Ridge and Natomas Valley are not being assessed at the maximum authorized rate as they have adequate funding to set aside funds for their long-term maintenance as well as pay for their ongoing regular maintenance. So those two are reduced quite substantially. I believe in Natomas Valley, the maximum authorized rate is $1,075, and $381 is what they're going to be assessed this year to cover all of their costs. The districts listed here are forecasted to go into a deficit over the next five years at their current rate of spending. Current service levels have previously been reduced to slow the growth of the deficit. The annual assessment revenue in these districts cannot support the annual maintenance costs or provide for long-term replacement of assets at the end of their useful life. These districts are planned for outreach in the Prop 218 process over the next three to five years. And here is just a quick look at those. They're highlighted in yellow here. You can see that many of them have a positive fund balance currently. This doesn't take into account that money that needs to be set aside for long-term replacement. This is just all of the funds in the account. And so you can see that they're spending beyond their revenue every year, and so it's just progressively making their way towards a deficit. And I just wanted to highlight that we do have a landscaping and lighting district advisory committee. They meet on the third Thursday of each month, right next door at the community center in the RG Smith Room at 7:00 PM. And the districts listed here, many of which were represented in the first part of this presentation, do not have representation. So if anyone lives within these districts or knows somebody who lives within these districts, it would be great to have their input and the future of their district. And then stay informed. We are committed to providing timely information to district residents. We are currently working on revamping the LNL district website to provide relevant documents and fact sheets for each district. The example here is for the Natomas Station Lighting Landscape District. We will continue to build these pages out based on priority of outreach efforts with the end goal of an updated page for all 30 districts. And with that, to my recommendations, which were to adopt Resolution 11399 and order the engineer of record to include a table within the final engineers' report to reflect revenues and expenses to further highlight operational deficits. And for direction, I just want to make sure is the council in agreement with staff's recommendation to continue to provide current level of service to the four districts that will be going through the Prop 218 process in the next two fiscal years? And is the council in agreement with staff's recommendation to reduce the level of service in Natomas Station starting July 1, 2025, as shown in their district budget?
Thank you very much, Jamison. Questions? Start with you, Councilmember Leary.
Thank you, I have quite a few questions, even though I think we've talked about a lot of this in this, undergone this process in the Natomas Station area. But I think that one thing that has been really difficult to overcome, and that's the lack of public knowledge about what LNLs are. And I know you've done this before for Natomas Station and are now starting on this. And one of my concerns is the ability to do outreach to the public because, A, a lot of people didn't know there was such a thing as a lighting and landscaping district. They didn't notice that on their annual tax bill. And then the other piece of that is there doesn't seem to be a way to communicate to each individual lighting and landscaping district, especially if they don't have a representative. But even when they do, there isn't a process for them to get the information about what's going on with the budget and changes in service to the rest of the neighborhoods. So I'm not sure what the plan is going forward. I know that, you know, we've talked with city manager about this, and I think that that needs to be made clear at some point because a lot of people won't be able to attend the meetings. And we know how that, that gets difficult when people can't go. But I think we've got to come up with some message to communicate.
All right, yeah, so, I mean, you saw the list of the districts. Over the next couple of years, we'll be doing a roadshow, going to a lot of these districts and providing this information. We've also teamed up with the city's communication team, so they are doing targeted outreach on social media, whether it's Nextdoor or Facebook, to provide that information to the residents to let them know that a meeting is happening or this is how you get to the district webpage to find all of those relevant documents. So we're definitely doing that. And we're going to try and reach as many people as we can and provide the facts of the matter.
Are all these slides going to be available online on the lighting and landscaping?
I have no issue with that, yeah.
Our council presentations are posted on the...
Yeah, including the whole slideshow.
Yes.
Sometimes I check back and there's some missing pieces. And then...
We will make sure that it's on the website.
Yeah, thank you. And then the, this, the question that, you know, you brought up about whether to continue the regular service, especially in the districts with deficits, or to discontinue that. And that's basically what the residents of Natomas Station have been told, is that anything above watering and keeping the streetlights on will be cut with, you know, no maintenance for lawns and shrubs. And unless it's an emergency situation where a tree is about to fall down and it needs to be removed. So it sounds like that's still open for additional conversation this evening?
Yes, so this is a preliminary engineers' report. You guys can direct any changes you want to see before the final engineers' report, which will set it in stone a little more there. So it is the council's direction that will determine that. However, our recommendation is to reduce those services as presented within that budget and then within those other four districts to continue providing that level of service that is budgeted, which is the base level of service for their landscaping, and allow them to accrue that deficit one last year while we give them the opportunity to vote on that.
And so the other piece of this is, and this is a common question, as you know, is how did, you know, there's a deficit, so the bills were paid over the last few years. So the residents are being asked, you know, in this upcoming budget to repay that deficit. And it's a hard thing to explain to residents. And, you know, you've done a good job of showing this here tonight. I don't know if our city manager wants to chime in on this because this came up at the two public hearings we had consistently. And I have another question or two after that, but if you want to address that.
Is that okay? So appreciate the opportunity to comment on this. I think it's important to note that I think all of us on our staff, on our team are kind of disappointed that we're at this point. And we recognize that we have to do better going forward. And, you know, as we've kind of analyzed and assessed the situation, our review has demonstrated that the money spent was to the benefit of the specific districts. And so taking that from one step to the other, it seems logical that those who receive the benefit should pay for that benefit. If we were not to do this, basically, other neighborhoods, other residents would have to pay for the benefit that that specific district received. And so in an effort to kind of be fair and equitable, and then amortizing this in a significant period so that even if they raise the rates, it's not going to be something that they really feel a lot of pain. And what I mean by that is we would hate to have a situation where we raise the rates for the district and they don't see any benefit or improvement in the district until they pay off the deficit. That's not what we're proposing. What we're hoping for all of these districts is that we can work together and communicate and take our necessary tongue lashings at all the public input meetings because we deserve it. We deserve to hear about it, and we're committed to doing better like this. And furthermore, in our budget conversations, hopefully, we have documentation and other things that people can follow, not just now, but throughout the year and communicate with us because we want to be open and transparent about all our finances. But our hope for Natomas Station, our hope for the other districts is that we can create a plan so that we can refurbish these communities back to what they were. And so that is kind of our ultimate goal, is how can we come together to make that happen? And I really appreciate Jamison and Derek and Kelly and all the folks involved with this because it's taken a lot of effort to get to this point. But I think we've created a foundation where we can show the information and communicate with, you know, our communications team and get it out so that it can be more of a productive conversation as opposed to one of those frustrations. And we're just going to have to demonstrate it. But I think we're in a point where we can ultimately get to a better place.
Thank you, Ray.
So I really don't take this lightly that these deficits were carried forward for the great number of years that they were. You know, this was the responsibility of prior administrations. And I, but we do need to move forward. And so I'm trying to make sure that we're all well-educated enough and that we're going forward with a process that the community understands is for their benefit. And that's a big hill to climb. We've been climbing it for a while now. But I want to double-check back and make sure that this measure tonight, or the resolution, is actually compliant with Prop 218 and that everything going forward is transparent. So can you address that, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Councilmember Leary. And Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the answer is affirmatively yes. We do not do anything that's separate and different from what the law requires. In fact, we have learned from this exercise that over the years, even though with good intentions, benefits were provided to the district residents, we got to do it better, just like city manager said. We got to do this right. So we're doing this the right way. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to reassure the public that I've gone through some of the bills, And I just want to reassure the public that I've gone through some of the bills, Jamison's, you know, passed information on to me to show what has been paid for within the district, because I've repeatedly heard that they're, you know, that the city is wasting money or spending things that they're not supposed to have been spent on. And I've gone through not every budget for the last 10 years, but recent ones, and, you know, the funds are being spent within the district that have been spent today, and there are things that necessary. There haven't been the funds to make improvements, and I think that what you're trying to outline here is if these things, if these district changes can be made and the establishment of new district goes, can go forward with a, probably a higher payment each year on each individual's part, that improvements can be made beyond just doing basic maintenance in the future.
Yes.
I believe that's the goal.
Yes, for instance, Natomas Station, there were four options for the residents to choose from, what they wanted us to bring forward. The fourth option being enhanced landscaping, new renovation projects, setting aside those funds for long-term replacement. That's what was voted on, and that's what will be brought forward on the 24th. And so, similar to Prairie Oaks, I don't have the date here, but it was only a few years ago, I believe during COVID, that that passed. They've had a large landscape enhancement on Grover and Iron Point. They addressed their ladder fuel this last year, and they'll be addressing another main entry on Rusi and Blue Ravine this year, including new irrigation controller, new landscape lighting, new everything on that corner, repainting their signs, refinishing the lettering on the signs. So that is, the goal is to have these projects that bring it back to what it was when it was originally installed over a period of time.
Right, so what we're seeing is, as big deficits that haven't been addressed can be addressed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roba?
Yeah, the last bullet item. What does that mean to reduce the level of service in Natomas Station? You know, I can't, I can't really see it in the budget, in the district budget, if that's what I'm looking at in the packet. So can you kind of explain what level of service? You're not saying we won't do any service, you're saying reduction.
Yes, so reducing the level of service for Natomas Station in particular, the top line in their budget is their scheduled maintenance, and I believe that should show zero within their district budget. That is their scheduled landscape maintenance. And so they needed to cut approximately $100,000 from their budget. Their landscape service was $101,000 and some rounding. So essentially, removing the landscape maintenance in its entirety is how we get to the numbers you have in front of you.
Okay, so that was the only reduction, is the maintenance is almost everything. But, so, is this something that the community agreed to as far as a reduction? Or maybe I'll wait before I ask?
I don't think it's something that, we've gone out and polled the district as far as what they want. At the public meetings, there was at least a number of folks that said, hey, is there any way, if we're really going to bring this to a vote, is there any way we can continue at least maintain that for a period of time until we understand where we're going to end up? And, you know, I was pretty firm in the, in those meetings, especially because they were so upset about the deficit. How could you let it get to a deficit, and then to ask for us to continue to let it go deeper into a deficit? But being that we're on a track that I think we have some positive momentum there, I mean, personally, I don't think I would be opposed to continuing that on and making it equal with all the other districts if we're, but we just do it with eyes wide open, that if we increase the deficit, and for some reason, these don't fail, it is actually a significantly greater problem to try to overcome that if that increased revenue doesn't happen. So there's, in some ways, a calculated risk. I'm not necessarily opposed to that risk, especially with the work that our staff has done and the communications. I feel better that things will have a more positive outcome, but I can't guarantee that that will happen.
Okay, thank you. That helps me, and I think I'll wait till I hear from the residents. Thank you.
Jamison, could you go back to that slide about Natomas Station, because I want to ask a follow-up question, and then I'll go to these gentlemen. Because, so even if you just kind of put aside that 729,220, that's kind of the debt that's already been accumulated, right? You're saying, even if we cut their budget by $100,000 and get rid of the maintenance, we're still going to run a deficit this year of 62,859?
So that's what I was talking about during that. We set aside the $70,000, because the engineer's report and budget were going through before we had bids back from the assessment engineer. And so the standard rate that we set in all districts was the $70,000, which is kind of the full, the full report and everything. However, they recently went through this. They just have to pull some new information, but the backbone of that report is there. So our recommendation is to reduce their spending by an additional $60,000. And so their deficit for this year, taking out that 70 and turning it into just 10,000 to pay for that, would be just shy of $3,000.
Got it, okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Raisel, questions?
Sure. So you mentioned something, which I think I didn't really know. You said the districts that were created before Prop 218 had no escalator. Were they not allowed to have an escalator before Prop 218? Was that why they don't have an escalator, or was it not common practice? I just kind of was getting back, I hadn't heard that part of the story yet, so I wanted to get some clarification on it.
Thank you. If I may address that really good question, Mr. Vice Mayor and Madam Mayor, City Council. So it's actually kind of the reverse. They were able to do a lot before Prop 218. The council was able to adjust the rate, change the assessment, increase, decrease a lot flexibility before Prop 218. Prop 218 put a stop to that, because now it's a properly-based assessment. So if there's no escalator, that means all of the assessments at that time are locked in, and hence the council lost the flexibility, because the Prop 218 cannot change, and hence the current rate has been on the books for 20 some odd years.
So essentially, they didn't think they needed an escalator when they put them in, because they didn't, because they just changed them at will? Okay.
Yes, sir. Nobody did before Prop 218.
So now, those that have been established after Prop 218, I see some of them are CPI, some of them are CPI not to exceed 3%, and some are 4%. What is our standard practice that we're looking for in new assessments? Or what are we looking to adjust to?
I mean, typically, what I've seen is the 3%, right? You know, escalator. I mean, that's something that, as we go forward and consult with folks, that we may come back with a modified recommendation, but that's typically what I've seen, is the 3%.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like we've got a mix of everything, so I was just kind of trying to understand what our standard was. So I think that that kind of builds it. If we were to pass a lower rate, but it's a not to exceed, if it doesn't have a not to exceed, then we have maybe some more room to grow into debt service, right? If it's a not to exceed 4%, we may have some extra room and flexibility 10 years down the road. What I don't want to do is pass something and then kind of end up right back in the same situation. That's where I'm going with it.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, you're spot on about the escalator, the CPI. The CPI is the best we can do to give the council the flexibility on the Prop 218, so that you can have the flexibility to decide how much adjustment you want to make within that escalator component. Now, this doesn't mean every year is automatic 3%. It means every year, you have to go through the engineer's report and figure out and find out, and engineer does that before you, to make a recommendation as to how much adjustment you need to consider making. It doesn't mean every year is automatic 3%. It can be 1%, it can be 0%, right? Depending on the need of the district and also the cost of providing the service.
Thank you. Next question, I live in Briggs Ranch, where it looks like we are the next guilty L&L in this, in this. And one of the things, when I'm looking at the individual L&Ls, I'm used to commercial maintenance associations, and when you set aside, you know, when you know you're going to have to replace your parking lot every 20 years, you really want to make sure you're collecting those assessments along the way. So that's the same, really, as our installment cost reserve here. What I would suggest, and maybe this is a question at this point, is shouldn't we also be highlighting this to the residents along with the fund balance? Because to me, it's like, well, yeah, you're 200 grand in the hole to the other L&Ls, but you're also 200 grand, if you're a Briggs Ranch L&L, you're also 200 grand behind on money you should have been setting aside for all the work that you're going to do in the future.
Yes, so when we do our individual outreach, we will be highlighting all of the budget items, out of respect for your time on budget hearing night. I am at 40 minutes and didn't want to, I've got another 12 to 15 slides that I didn't pull up on all of those other districts for the next five years. So there's a lot of information, and we will be providing that to each individual district when we do that outreach.
But I guess you're asking us to direct the district engineer to put the fund balances front and center on the report, right?
Yes, so essentially, that table that I included in here is what I'm looking to have incorporated into the actual engineer's report to just further highlight.
Should we also include in that table the installment cost reserve?
We can absolutely...
For each district? Just so you know, like, hey, by the way, you're also behind, because to me, that's relevant information that I would like to know. I can...
We can do that, okay.
Next question, can we use L&L funds? It seems like this has been a lot of a communication problem. I went back to the last budget. I can't find these numbers in the last budget. I've looked at the city budgets for many years, and I can't say these ever stuck out to me. So it seems like it's a lot of it is a communication challenge that we're facing. Are we allowed to use L&L funds for public outreach? And do we use any funds for that at this point? Like, is there any designated, like, hey, 5% of this should really be used to get this message out and to get people that are serving on this commission, you know, to get that? Like, an HOA probably spends some of their money on inviting people to meetings and brewing some coffee for the meeting, right? Some doughnuts?
So really good question. The answer is probably not coffee or doughnuts, but incidental, not a huge amount incidental expenses. The primary purpose for the assessments is to pay for the improvements, for the benefit of the district residents. So those incidentals are fine, but not a huge amount. Outreach is part of incidental.
Flyers would be okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Last question is, when is Natomas Station back on the ballot? And sorry if you said this. And when, if it were to pass, when would funds start being received?
So our intention is to bring an item back to you at your next council meeting to initiate the proceedings. And then in August, we would have the step two of three, which would order the balloting and set the public hearing. And then I believe, I don't know that I have the timeline on here, but that puts us in the October timeframe, after that 45-day waiting period, to then count the ballots, and then, I guess, August would be when it hits the assessment rolls. I would have to talk with the county to see exactly when.
Right, and if it hit that, then it would be over the course of the next year, and those property tax installments, that we would get it. So you're looking more towards the end of '26, '27 that you would have?
End of '26, beginning of '27?
Yeah, where we'd actually start to see the revenue flow in.
Got it. So it would be floating them four months until we knew a ballot result, and then a year and a half, if we expect, if we had a positive result, we would be floating it for a year and a half.
Yeah. Stacy, does that sound about right? If we're looking at the, getting this moving forward, Natomas Station, we get a positive outcome, we go through the assessment process, really, that wouldn't happen until like the '26, '27 year? Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All good. Councilmember Kozlowski?
Just one probably unrelated question. The sound wall along East Natomas on the outside of Briggs Ranch, is that part of their lighting district, or is that a city wall?
We'll look at Mr. Chan's.
Because that was added much later.
Yeah, that is a city wall. It's, the Public Works Department maintains that.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you. I think we have several requests to speak on this. Just a reminder, if you want to speak on this, but you haven't yet submitted a blue card, if you could just get a blue card from the table, fill it out, hand it to the officer, and we will call you up.
Okay, your first speaker on this item will be Michael Amet, who will be followed by Kevin Goddard. So Michael coming down. Kevin, if you know you're next, you can be up and ready on deck.
Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino, and honorable council members. I'm a resident of Natomas Station and have been for the last 29 years, and I was a little blindsided by this whole thing, and finding out that we've been spending money we don't have. That's contrary to the way I run my household budget, and it seems poor practice. Thank you, Mr. Whitemeyer, for acknowledging that things have slipped through the cracks, to put it politely. I was one of those who voted no, and the reason I voted no on this new assessment was because, A, I felt blindsided, like it just came out of the blue, and I had no view of it before. Now, being a guy who's got a life and busy and got lots of things going on, I admit that I don't look at my property tax bill. It comes out of the mortgage, et cetera, and I wasn't noticing details. I don't spend a lot of time on the city website, and I have not been attentive to this, so I'll own my part. However, what I would like to say is that I appreciate the position that we're in, and I understand that we have work to do. And I know that it's time to take some responsibility. It's going to cost us some money. We need to backfill a hole. I'm happy to do that. So my no vote has become yes, and that is because I value my neighborhood, and I value my neighbors, and I want to preserve my property value. It is in my interest to vote yes, now that I understand at a more granular level what we're up against and what we would be dealing with. That much said, I would like very much, if we could be carried until this new vote, I will do the footwork to get out the vote, to change no votes to yes. We have a very skinny margin to overcome, and I think we can do that, and I would really appreciate not having my neighborhood go to crap in the meantime. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate it.
Okay, our next speaker will be Kevin Goddard, and next on deck will be Bill Barcelona.
Welcome, Kevin.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Manager, and esteemed City Council. I am Kevin Goddard. I live in Natomas Station, so that's what I'm here to talk about, and that's why I'm in this section. And to kind of just, I appreciate the questions you were asking, because I was sitting back there going, yes, this is the kind of stuff that I want to see and I want to hear. These are the kind of questions that, again, the average citizen has no idea. I want to thank Jamison for the presentation. I just wish that it had been done before Natomas Station had to vote on this, because like we're hearing from these residents, they had no idea what it meant. It was just after Measure G, and people were like, I don't want to pay anymore. Like, I'm done paying more, the city gets enough money, I don't know. But what they didn't understand, what that vote actually meant. And in talking to residents, when they voted no, they thought it was just keeping the level of service that they already had. They did not realize that voting no meant removal of services. The presentation and understanding of like the debt and everything in the other districts, what they're going through, makes complete sense. I'm in full support of it. I voted yes the first time, because I had been paying attention, I was voting, I was part of it, went out and talked to people, but it wasn't enough. So what I just ask of you is to continue the services that we have in Natomas Station. We'll work on it to get this ballot measure out, and like you've seen with the community outreach, there's a lot of people that are very passionate about it. Natomas sits right at the entrance to Folsom, right next to the outlets, which is a very popular place in the summer. I think it would not meet Folsom's motto of distinctive by nature if we're letting these places go. So please consider that. I appreciate you and your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, the next speaker is Bill Barcelona. Bill will be followed by Dean Williams.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for hearing us out tonight, and I want to thank the city manager for meeting with us last Friday and going through the budget. I reviewed the budget draft from 5/27/25, which I think is the only version that's available to the residents online, and I looked at the engineer's report. This problem is significant. It extends far beyond Natomas Station. It's not just the eight districts that are in deficit, it's also an additional 10 landscape and lighting districts that will fall behind over the next five years. This is something that's been brewing for over a decade, and this was one of the complexities that we faced when we were walking the neighborhood to garner yes votes. And as you saw, we only lost by 1%. There was a lot of misunderstanding. When we talk about outreach... When we talk about outreach efforts, the outreach efforts were, um, uh, two of our neighbors paid to develop the flyers, and a handful of us, maybe half a dozen of us, walked the neighborhoods, including Councilmember Leary, uh, to try to educate our neighbors. And of course, we had a poor understanding of what was going on as well. Um, all of those things, I think, boil down to the fact that we really need your help to maintain the minimal level of services that we have right now. If you've been through Natoma Station in the last few years, you'll know that our monumentation is crumbling, our grass is dying, our landscape is way past its lifespan, our, um, sprinkler systems are outmoded. Um, so just maintaining what we have will barely keep the appearance of the common areas, um, sufficient for the next couple of years. We need your help. Now, in looking at the budget, I have some different numbers based on what I'm seeing, uh, from what Justin has presented. The, um, eight districts that are listed in the budget who are at a deficit amount to about $2,589,000. That is the current deficit amount. That's about 1% of the city budget that you're evaluating right now. That is the deficit that we're carrying on these districts. And then, over the next five years, we'll move into further deficits if we don't do anything with those additional 10. So, um, we really need your help tonight, and we really hope that you will, uh, help us with our outreach efforts as we move forward to get this, uh, passed. I think we have a good shot at getting it done. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for the feedback, Bill.
Okay, the next speaker is Dean Williams, and Dean will be followed by Margie Donovan.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Manager. Um, I don't want to repeat everything that a lot of people already talked about. Barbara hit some really key points. Um, I live in Natoma Station. The, um, frustration that we've seen is just the lack of clarity, not knowing what's going on. We've already talked about it. I've talked to a couple other people just in Folsom, kind of getting their question, hey, do you know what's, and they are clueless. I would bet that 95% of the people in Folsom have no idea what a lighting and landscape means, that they're even paying it or anything. And I think that's a really big issue for you coming down the line. So we're the guinea pigs. Um, we beat ourselves up the first time, and we're ready to come back around again. And you, as you've heard, and at the meetings that, that you were involved with Brian, um, once people understood what was going on and they realized the cause and effect, they were like, yeah, and that makes sense. I mean, jeez, when was the last time you didn't get a, have a, an increase in 35 years? That's basically what has happened. So, um, I think most people are frustrated with the debt and how that got pushed aside. Um, that's another story, and pointing fingers isn't going to fix the problem at this point. Um, I do ask that during this time period that we get, um, coverage so that our, what we do have doesn't completely go away, because that's going to cost even that much more money to fix if it all dies out. Um, hopefully, and I think we will pass it, then to help cover us till it comes back around. I do want our measure or assessment to be like, I guess, was Level 4, because I want to fix things, replace things, but also build in replacement costs. The city of Folsom doesn't do that at all on our parks and trails and a lot of other stuff. And this is just a, a situation that Folsom never has done, and it's killing us. We have no money to do extra stuff. We can't get money for matching funds for the bridge. We can't get the parks fixed. We can't add more, because we're barely surviving month to month, and we need to figure out how to get around that. Um, my other question, real, real quick, ooh, I'm hanging in there, um, is what happens when we pay the debt off? Okay, we're paying 700 and some thousand, or whatever it's going to be. Now all of a sudden, we're paying, we've got this excess funds. What happens? Can, because you, uh, he said we couldn't lower it. Is there a way to get around it, or is it aside, set aside?
So, so, uh, essentially, what you do every year with the engineer's report, you can adopt the new assessment. You know, so if, uh, the situation is one where you're seeing an influx and the reserve is building at too great of a level, and if you don't have capital projects to assign to it, then you could say, hey, you know, this year, we're not, we're not raising the assessment. We're leaving it as it is. And so the maximum assessment can still grow per the CPI of that year, um, but you just would hold the line. I think that on one of the charts that Jameson had, there's two, uh, of the districts that are not at the maximum level. So, uh, the, the, I guess, one of the positives about this is, uh, through the, the council hearing process and the engineer's report, uh, the residents will continue to have a say that, hey, let, let's raise it, advocate for, uh, raising it, or hey, let's keep it where it is, and that way we can actually, you know, uh, use reserves to fund the level of maintenance, but you have that ability to go up or down.
Okay, perfect. And then one last thing, communication. We suck at it. And it's what, this re, why we have this problem. And I think doing something, whether it's a biannual report that comes out to every district, that says, here's your budget, here's where the money's going, here's what you got left for the year, and, because then people can look at and go, well, I thought you said you were going to fix the trees this year. And we can come back and make sure that that gets done. Or at least there's communication, because then we can't, people can't come back and go, well, I didn't know, if you're giving them more information. And that's going to help the city council, whether it's the L and L, or Parks and Rec, or whatever. The more communication you can get out to people, the more information that you can get in our hands, the less there's a lack of trust. And there's a lack of trust right now, and this will help it.
Thank you, Dean. We appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Margie Donovan, who will be followed by Sharon Kendall. Margie, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a statement and then a question. Um, I am blind, and I find it amazing that people do not pay attention to the tax bill and know that we're paying li, lighting and landscaping. And, um, I think Jameson did an outstanding report. Thank you, Jameson. My concern is for, uh, districts that choose not to. It sounds like, um, Natoma Station might be changing their mind. But when public trees are overhanging the sidewalk, um, that's an access barrier for those of us that are blind that navigate the city. And I would like to hear if a, um, particular area chooses not to increase and, um, they're funding their, their taxes for L and L, um, assessments. Um, what then happens with those trees that are overhanging the sidewalk that become barriers? That's my question.
Ryan, I'll take that.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I mean, we'd evaluate every circumstance, and our goal would be to eliminate barriers. Uh, but, but this is kind of a fundamental question, uh, for everything, not just Natoma Station, but for the budget in general. As a community, although we have these desires to, to, uh, resolve all the issues, if the money's not there, regardless of the risk or the liability, how do you make something out of nothing? Right? I mean, so, I, I totally understand that. In this particular case, if it was just a tree limit, we would go out there and cut it. But when you magnify that by literally thousands, tens of thousands of work orders, if the funding's not there, um, and so what we're committed to is putting together budgets and, and communication and other things so that we can have a plan for all of those things. And, and we may have to modify what we focus on compared to what we do now, but, but those are things that we're going to have to work through.
Thank you.
Well, I will close by stating this. In the neighborhood in which I live, we have a lot of trees that belong to the city, and they be, they've been barriers. I, this, in the last couple of weeks, have been walking around with pruners and cutting them when I'm hit in the face by them. And that's my solution, because the city is not staying on top of this for whatever reason. And I don't believe that, um, the Ravino is an issue in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie, for the feedback.
Okay, our next speaker is Sharon Kendall.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jameson, would you just mind putting back up that slide where you asked us to take action and for our?
And Madam Mayor, could I add a comment before?
Sure.
Uh, you know, based on the comments that we've had, and then just the, the feedback that we've received through the public comment period, um, you know, uh, in this recommendation, we were leaving Natoma Station out as, uh, one that we would carry over. Uh, staff would be comfortable if the, if the council wanted to include that, that way we could continue it over. Um, obviously, there's a risk when we do that, that the deficit could grow. Um, but, I, I mean, my personal opinion, based on all the different challenges we had with the last, um, process, despite that, it just barely, you know, did not pass. And I think from what we've heard today with the increase in communication and information, uh, that we have a very good chance of seeing success.
Great, thank you.
Could I ask a quick clarification on that? Are, are you saying for the four months until the next ballot, or the year and a half until the funds arrive?
Well, I mean, I guess i- in essence, this is a, a critical policy decision in that, uh, it would set the precedence for all of those, in that, um, uh, you know, because, because none of us want to see things just degrade to such a level that it actually costs more to replace it all, uh, later on. And so we would go that with our eyes wide open in the sense that we would know that it's actually that 18-month period before the, the funds would come in, uh, but I guess we would be supportive of that if the council's comfortable.
Sure. But I'm saying is, if they vote yes in four months, then we'll kind of be assured for that year and a, the other year.
Oh, you're saying if it's the no, well, yes.
But if it's a no vote, then, then we would reduce level of service at that point, because it's, the voters have spoken twice, right?
Right. And so we'll talk about this a little later in the budget presentation, with the process that we will follow in, in having kind of a, a, a budget review in September, October, and then also in February, that we would have other opportunities to either turn on or turn off the funding to that, to those districts.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one other thing, because we've been talking about the current level of service, which has actually been diminished, um, probably over the last 10 years. So plants aren't being replaced when they die, dead plants aren't even being pulled out of the ground. I mean, there's, there's been a significant reduction anyway, so we're not talking about going back to what I think a basic level of service would, uh, uh, you know, what that term would mean to most people. It would mean more than, than we've been getting, so.
Right. I think we're saying, maintain for '25, '26 what we did for '24, '25.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah. Jameson, is that, does that make sense? I- if we were to continue with Natoma Station, that $100,000 that you removed would go back, but that $100,000 represents a, a pretty much bare, minimal, you know, service level.
Yes, so the deficit, the operational deficit would be roughly $105,000 this coming year.
All right, I'll understand a motion.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Sure, I, I can, I can make the motion, uh, but I guess, I just want to, want to get a little clarity first. Because, because to me, I, I also want to be cognizant that this is a democratic process, right? Uh, at the end of the day, if the voters say they don't want this, then I want to respect their wishes. Uh, and so I just wanted to be clear that we're going to extend funding for the '25, '26 year unless the voters vote this down in October, and then in that case, we don't fund it for the whole '25, '26 year. We reduce level of service based on their wishes.
Would that mean that we bring it back if, the, after the ballot?
Uh, yeah. I, I mean, whether it would be through the normal budget process, uh, there would be a decision point. I mean, one, we would just carry it on if it passed. We would know. If it's a no vote, we would come back just to, uh, it would be when we announced the results of it, and we would just say, hey, clearly, this means that we have to, um, modify the budget so that we're not, I mean, we would end those contracts or whatever it is.
Yeah, I don't, I hope, hopefully, that's not a discussion. I just want to be prepared for that. I don't, want to make sure we're respecting the will of folks that have voted.
I think that needs to be made abundantly clear to the community, that, you know, it will be extended, but if there is a no vote, that, that, um, more draconian measures will be taken.
Uh, understood, yes.
Uh, so this is Resolution Number 11399. Yeah, I'm comfortable, too, with the, what if, you're directing the engineer to basically include the total district account balance, uh, in the table, so you guys can figure out what the total district account balance means, but I think that would mean what we're missing in, you know, deferred collections also. Um, and with that, I'll move Resolution 11399 with a maintenance of funds for all of the L and L districts, as included in the district engineer's report.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, and I know Councilmember Rorba has a comment.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I, I agree, um, with the direction of including Natoma Station on the continuing level of service. I also, um, agree, you, you don't have to come up. I don't, I don't have a question, I don't think. I don't think, but we never know. Um, uh, I, I agree with that, and I, but I also agree that, um, you know, they're going to speak very loud, uh, at the next ballot, so, um, we could, if we have to reevaluate that, we need to. Um, just, that's just to encourage. I do think that, um, we want to, or at least I do, uh, want to support Natoma Station as much as possible, as they need to get the, their voice out, um, because you really are, as, um, one of the speakers said, the guinea pig for the rest of our L and Ls. And, but I do want to say thank you, Jameson, for your presentation. You did a great job. Um, these are kind of tricky issues, because, um, this is showing what transparency will do, and maybe why there wasn't as much transparency in the past, because it feels icky in the beginning, it's a little bit more chaotic. But once we get there and we can build that trust, then it's, we're much better together, all being on the same page, and, and, and then deciding together how we move forward as a city to make sure that we still are as vibrant as we once were and are at the time and can continue to be. So, um, I do want to thank our city manager for that. He hasn't shied away from any tough issues, um, so far in the three or four months that he's been here. So I really appreciate that, and I think that, uh, Natoma Station residents are feeling that. Um, I also want to thank you for your tone tonight. Um, you were very respectful, understanding. I don't think anyone is getting everything they want, but, um, I do appreciate that a lot of you engaged in the process, um, in the workshops, and to our council member, uh, being available to you guys. So, um, thank you for that tone. You, you did a really great job, and I'm really proud to call you residents of Folsom. Um, and so that, those were my comments.
All right. Any other discussion?
I just want a little bit of clarification here. And that is, is we're approving the, um, preliminary engineer's report tonight, and we are asking for the final engineer's report to include the, you know, projected, um, deficits, and, uh, we're not approving at this time the, um, I guess, the actual rate of repayment or the time period for repayment, because I think there's still some, uh, desire to, uh, to change that, uh, for this particular district. And, um, I'm not proposing that we add that tonight, but I think there's still additional negotiations or discussion that needs to take place when we come back with the final engineer's report. Is that correct?
I- i- if I could ask a clarifying question, are you talking about the, the period with which the payback occurs?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we'll, we'll come back with a formal recommendation, uh, with the final engineer's, engineer's report. Is that okay, Jameson, if we do that, related to the payback?
Yes.
Yeah, because there had been discussion at the community meetings about a 10- to 15-year payback, since it's significantly higher than a lot of the other districts.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll come back with a more definitive, uh, message.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you all very much for being here. Thank you, Jameson. Next item, please.
Okay, that takes you to your public hearing item tonight. This is item number 11, Resolution Number 11401, a resolution adopting the fiscal year '25, '26 operating and capital budgets for the City of Folsom, the Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Finance Director Stacy Tamanee and I will be, uh, uh, working together on this presentation. I'll start us off. But before I do that, I just want to thank the entire City of Folsom team, from top to bottom, that has compiled information to help develop the budget. And I do want to highlight Stacy, Adam, and their whole team, who have helped kind of reformat the budget. And I know it was a lot of manual entry to get to this point, and our hope is that it, it is a format that we can automate more easily going forward. But this was a big push, and, and it's something that I don't take lightly, so thank you very much. So, just to kind of describe where we are today, we're having our first kind of public hearing related to the budget. Our hope is that we present the information, we receive comments from the, the public, and that we receive questions from the council. But our hope is that we continue the public hearing, mainly because we just published on our website, the revised, we had the version of the budget that was presented on May twenty-seventh. And so, as we went through that, in particular, we wanted to revise the summary pages, so that it includes the cash balances, excluding the assets. Because we wanted to make it a document where the residents and the council could see how much money is actually available for us to make a decision. And when it includes the assets, that's not as clear. So, that's kind of what we're hoping. So, as far as the budget process, we have this hearing, and then, on June twenty-fourth, we come back, we hold a budget, a, a public hearing again. We, we receive public input. And then, our hope is, at that time, the council adopts the preliminary budget. And then, in July, September, we will come back to the council with what I, I kind of refer to our, as our final review of, of the final budget. Because now, we have the closeout of the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and we're looking at the twenty-five, twenty-six year. And so, we can see, we thought we were starting at this point, did we really start at that point? And if we need to make adjustments, we can do that. And then, so, the other thing is, in September and October, we'll have that final budget review, but we'll also be looking at the actual ending fund balances, and then to see if, almost the development of the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, if, what type of budget reductions we'll need to make. Because as you'll see in this budget presentation, we're, we're projecting a $3.5 million operating deficit. And then, in February or March, the city will conduct a mid-year budget review. Why that's important is it allows us another opportunity to make changes, if needed, when we look at our revenues that have come in. Are we hitting our targets? Are we exceeding our targets? Are we coming in lower? So, by that point, any adjustments needed for the current year will be approved by the city council, and then staff will be seeking direction from the council as to what cuts they would consider, including in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-seven. And why that's important is, the way our services are provided, specifically on the Parks and Recreation side, there's a lot of lead-up to that. You know, hiring of part-time staff for the different programs. And so, if there are some reductions that are going to be included in that, we need to do it before it's actually started, and before it's all put in place. So, even if there was the desire in the, in the, this upcoming year, to do it, we have our summer programs all in full swing, we wouldn't necessarily realize the savings that one would hope at that time. So, going to the next slide with budget development options, sorry, I skipped ahead, so I think it's one more. So, as, as we look forward, I mean, here's something, Stacy's going to go into all the details, but as I've kind of looked at summarizing, what are our options? Well, one, we develop a budget where our expenditures are below our revenue, so we live within our means. The other is, we find another revenue source, or we keep things as they are in a deficit position, and the outcome that way is not good. So, basically, I would say, option three is not an option, right? And so, we're, we're with the, the other two. And so, if we could go to the next slide, this is kind of important to me. Not less than a year ago, the residents, you know, kind of communicated a message that, hey, let's see what you can do with the money you have. And so, that's kind of in line with our budget process that we've set up for this year and the next year, is one, trying to hold the line for this year, as we navigate and make the proper review, and, in many ways, a transparent public process of what those cuts could look like for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year. And hopefully, you know, get the public input that we need, so that we can right-size ourselves going forward. And at that point, the community can decide, hey, are we okay with those cuts? Or maybe we, should we review that option two of looking at another revenue source? Next slide. Just some background of, you know, because sometimes with our budget, unintentionally, we, we send mixed messages. And most of our conversation that we have on a day-to-day basis about the general fund, because those are the services that we see and touch, police, fire, parks, you know, our parks programs, aquatic center, that's all funded by the general fund. But the city is actually a municipal corporation that provides police, fire, public works, planning, parks, recreation, utilities such as water, wastewater, and solid waste disposal. And so, I look at this because I think it's important for us to note that we have subsidiaries within our organization. We brought this up at the May twenty-seventh meeting. So, you have the city of Folsom, which would be yum in this scenario. And then, we have Taco Bell would be, I was going to say Sewer, but that's kind of inappropriate. So, we'd have Taco Bell as, let's say, water, Pizza Hut as Parks and Rec, or general fund, and then, solid waste would be Kentucky Fried Chicken. So, so, all those things come into play in that we can only use funds for distinct purposes. And so, especially when you see the city with the development activity, it kind of creates this dichotomy of, how can we struggle to main, maintain certain things, but yet we're building new parks or new facilities? And the reason for that is, they're in these different silos. And so, if we go to the next slide, this is kind of a breakdown without the, the logos, but if we go to the next one, the budget structure is one that we have over a hundred and fifty funds. And so, in the budget document we have now, on the first four pages, you should be able to see all a hundred and fifty or so funds. So, if we go to the next slide, this is kind of the, the layout. You'll see the general fund at the top, and that's really the only funds that the city council have that are discretionary. You can do pretty much whatever you want. Obviously, public safety is, is and has been the, the top priority, as it should be. But then, you go into the variety of funds that include the lighting and landscape districts and CFDs. If you go to the next slide, the general fund summary pages, five and six, kind of drill down onto the general fund. So, this shows kind of a historical accounting of the general fund revenues on a larger level of taxes, license, permits. And then, on the expenditure side, it shows the different departments and what those expenditures are. If we go, and then, at the bottom of that, you can see, when you factor in the expenditures, revenues, transfers in, transfers out, you can see if, if, what the net cost is to the city. Next slide, please. So, with that, I'll turn the time over to Ms. Tamanee. Thank you.
Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening. Thank you, Brian, and, and good evening to all of the council members. I'm Stacy Tamanee, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I'm happy to present some additional details on this proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. As the city manager has already mentioned, this year's budget is being presented in a completely new format for us, so it's pretty significantly different from our previous budget book. And I just want to emphasize the work that went into it. We have a very small budget team, just myself and Adam Devlin, so I wanted to be sure to take this opportunity to thank him for all of his hours that he put into creating this book for you tonight. I'm, and I'd also like to thank the council for their patience. There was a lot of time, a lot of manual effort required to complete this, and so there may be some minor clerical errors in the document, but we've done our best to make sure that it's as accurate as possible for you tonight. And finally, please note that some changes have been made since that first version that you got. It's in front of you tonight, and it has been posted on the city's website. So, with that, we'll dive into the slides here. We began this budget preparation similar to years past. We start on the revenue side, and that's the top line that you have on the slide here, projecting the increase to the total general fund revenue. And so, we are estimating revenues to increase over last year's budgeted figures by about $4.7 million, as you go across on that top line. So, increase to projected revenue, $4.7 million. About half of that increase is associated with property tax growth, primarily from development in the Folsom Plan area. And then, the other general fund revenues combined account for the additional $2 million increase over the prior year. So, when we add the first and the third columns, in total, it's about $120 million, or about a 4% overall increase in revenues. For expenses, we'll go down to that second line. We start with the $117 million original budget that the city council approved last year in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then, we remove the one-time items that the city council approved, because those won't be continuing. As we move for, and that was about $2 million, and it was mostly for capital expenses. To determine the total proposed expenditure budget, we're working towards the $120 million that we have in available revenues. So, as we move across here, we had to add in $5.5 million right off the bat for increases in salary benefit and insurance costs. So, these are increases in labor costs approved in MOU agreements, regular annual salary step increases, benefit cost increases, and insurance costs. That adds $5.5 million to the budget. And when, so when you add up the three lines, $117 million, you subtract the $2 million of one-time costs, plus the $5.5, you're at $120.5 million in expenditures. We just saw on the line above that we have $120 million in revenues. So, just by adding that in, that left the city manager with a half a million dollar shortfall, even before addressing any of the department requests this year, and we had $18.5 million of requests. We know that recent budgets have not been covering the true cost of providing all the services that the city provides, and that's why we see throughout the year that some departments and some line-ups go over their budget. Although the past two budgets have included significant increases to the operating accounts to try to keep up with the growing costs, we've still been behind. And so, this year, the city manager is proposing to, again, increase those department budgets by an additional $3 million. And so, you see that in the next column, true-ups to operating accounts at the $2.975 million. And that's to fully account for those cost increases, no additional services. So, when we go across that line and add up all of the columns now for expenses, it's total expenditures of $103.5 million, which you see in the final column. We have $120 million in revenue, so that creates a total deficit of $3.5 million that will have to come from your unassigned fund balance, otherwise known as the emergency reserve. And this will be the first time in at least twenty years that the budget proposes to use the emergency reserve outside of a recession for ongoing operating expenses. So, now, we'll go into the details a little bit, and just look at what makes up these two items primarily. So, the first is the increase in the personnel costs and insurance. We're seeing a $2.5 million increase to salary and your non-perse benefits. Again, this is increases related to the MOU agreements, your regular annual salary step increases, and benefit costs that are not related to CalPERS. $2.4 million increase to CalPERS. This is for our current payments for our current employees, and then also, the city's required contribution to the unfunded accrued liability. And then, we have about a $645,000 increase to liability, property, and other insurance combined. So, that gets you the total increase of $5.5 million that just had to be added into the budget right off the top. Then you have additional operations and maintenance line items that needed to be increased to cover the services that we're already providing. This is what we call the true-ups. You have a list of those true-ups that was provided as an additional item in the packet. As we go through the departments, general government had a true-up of $22,000. That's all of your administrative functions. Community development of about $45,000. Facilities of $153,000. The fire department of $732,000. Library at $19,000. Parks and Recreation at $1.6 million. And the police department at $427,000. For total true-up requests of $3 million. So, this is a summary of the results of this proposed budget, as far as the, what the budget committee saw. So, we received $18.5 million in requests for this budget year, including twenty-nine new positions. And only because we're using the emergency reserve, we were able to approve $2.9 million of expenses, but zero general fund positions are being recommended. So, all of the expenses that we've gone over so far now are included in this slide, and you see that in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget column, ending with that total of $123.5 million. That does include the $3.5 million use of the emergency reserves, so that's just blended in there into all of those lines. And I'll go through each category here. So, starting with the top line, salary and benefit expense will increase by $4.8 million compared to fiscal year twenty-five. This is a combination of the elements that we already discussed, including CalPERS. So, it's a total of a 6% increase. The operations and maintenance budget is proposed to increase by about $3.8 million, or up 13%. This increase is related to those true-ups that were listed on the earlier slide, along with increased insurance costs. The next item here for capital outlay, this is a change this year. This budget proposes moving capital costs out of the general fund, and accounting for them separately in separate capital funds. So, that, that line item is going down, but you'll see that on the bottom, transfers out are going up, and it's going to move to other funds. And I'll go into a little more detail on those in a, in a next slide. The debt service is pretty much in line with prior year, and then we have the transfers out, which I just mentioned, going up this year to account for those capital costs. So, total expenses at the $123.5 million, a $6.4 million increase, or about a 5% change. This slide displays the general fund proposed appropriations sorted by your departments. So, year over year, you have that $6.4 million increase for that same total of $123.5 million here. The fire department at the top is up about $1 million over the prior budget. There's two parts to this. They're up for the increases in the operating cost true-ups that we showed, and also salary benefit and insurance cost increases. But then, they're down, because we took their capital budget out of their department, and it's moving to transfers out. So, it's a little bit skewed year over year, but as we move forward, the capital costs won't be in there, and you'll be able to see the true change, just for true-ups or salary and benefit increases. Same situation for police. They're up $2 million here, year over year, but they also had a vehicle budget that was included in capital, and that's been moved down to transfers out as well. But they had salary and benefit insurance costs, and also their true-ups to their operations. Community development has a slight decrease here. This is related to some one-time expenses, mostly grants, that were included in their budget in the prior year. So, those have been removed, but then offset by increased salary benefit and insurance costs. Public Works is up by about $188,000 salary benefit and insurance costs. They didn't have any true-ups to their operating accounts this year. For general government, all of your administrative departments, it's up for those true-ups, and then regular salary benefit and insurance cost increases. Parks and Recreation Department up about $950,000 from the prior year. This is about $1.6 million in true-ups, salary benefit and insurance increases, and then that's offset by one-time approvals that the city council approved last year for Kids Play Park, and also the community center upgrades. So, those came out of their department and are not included anywhere else, again, for this year. The library is up about $84,000 for true-ups, and their salary and benefit insurance increases, that's offset by about $80,000 in one-time approvals that they had last year. Down to facilities, they're up $258,000 for true-ups, salary and benefit and insurance increases. And then, your non-departmental, which is everything that doesn't fit into a specific department, is pretty much even with last year. And some items that are in there is your $1.1 million contingency, $3.9 million for retiree health costs, the general fund's share of the transfer into the retiree health trust fund, our tax-sharing agreement with the Paladio, debt service, payment for the, to the county for a property tax administration. Items like that are what are included in your non-departmental. And then, transfers out, we already discussed a little bit. So, we started this idea of having capital funds transferred out and held in separate funds last year, when the city council approved to have $50,000 moved to an IT capital fund. So, this is just continuing with that idea, but doing it for all of the departments. So, we will now have a fleet capital fund with $125,000 going there, $200,000 to the IT capital fund, $756,000 this year being transferred out for fire equipment, and then, $521,000 going to the new police equipment and capital fund. So, none of these were increases to their budget. These amounts were already in the budget last year. It's just moving it down to transfers out, going into another fund, so we can account for them separately. And it helps, too, if they don't spend it in the year, for some reason, it's easier for us to track it in the next year, because it'll just stay in that fund. So, this slide shows the capital expenditures that are approved or recommended to be spent this year. For the new capital fleet fund, $125,000 for non-safety vehicles, $150,000 in the capital IT fund for replacing IT system equipment, $756,000 for 11 ECG monitors for the fire department, and $521,000 for new vehicles in the police department. This slide is also showing some recommendations that the city manager's making to spend out of our capital facilities fund, Fund 602. That is the fund that, if we have extra fund balance at the end of the year, over 20%, gets transferred into that fund. So, that's a capital fund that the, the city council does have discretion over the expenditures. So, this budget here proposes $3.6 million. $1.3 million for roof replacement for the library, $1.8 million for HVAC replacement for the library, $300,000 for the small vehicle roof repair building for fleet, and then $240,000 for slope roof replacement for city hall. It's a portion of the roof that wasn't included in the, the project that we just did recently. So, it's $3.6 million coming out of Fund 602, and the cash balance in that fund right now, that's available for general fund expenses, is $5.9 million. So, with those expenditures, it will leave you with about $2.3 million remaining in the fund. And just recall that this fund does not have a source of revenue. The current balance is just what the city's been able to set aside over the ten years. So, these projects here will use up about 60% of that fund this year. And here you have the pie chart detailing this appropriation by department for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Fiscal year twenty-six looks very much the same as last year. The only change is in the fire department, and this is because of their capital line item coming out of their department budget and moving to transfers. So, you'll see that fire went down from twenty-six to twenty-five, but transfers out went from So you'll see that fire went down from '26 to '25, but transfers out went from 0 up to 1%. For the most part, everyone else, or not for the most part, everyone else does have the same percentages there. So we show this to show that this proposed budget continues to maintain that balance of expenditures by function. And then here you have your chart of authorized positions. This budget does not propose any new general fund positions, but you do see an increase from fiscal year '25's original approved budget to fiscal year '25-'26, because the city council in this current year already approved a park planner and arborist position that will be funded with funding sources outside of the general fund, but they are included in general fund departments, so they're listed there. We do have one position proposed in water and wastewater, and then seven positions in solid waste, for a total increase year over year of 10 positions. So now we'll take a look at the revenues. This slide is the '24-'25 revenue budget, and then the proposed figures for '25-'26. We're projecting total revenues, including those transfers in from other funds, to be at 120 million dollars, which we have already gone over. Property taxes are expected to continue on that current trend line and increase over the prior year by about 3.3 million. Sales tax is estimated at 28 million for next year. We're bringing it down from last year's budget, because we're not going to hit that 29 million dollar mark. We'll likely be far below it this year, hoping to get to the 28 million for next year. Transient occupancy tax from our hotels is projected at 25.5 million for '25-'26, so just a little bit of growth over the prior year. Licenses and permits is proposed at 4 million, pretty much in line with this year's budget. Intergovernmental, which is primarily our vehicle license fees, is, we're expecting a slight increase there from about 11 million to 11.3. Charges for services is one that had a fairly large increase, proposed at just under 17 million. There's a lot of fees in this category. The biggest one is a projection for an increase in ambulance revenue in the fire department. We have increases in community development revenue with some of their fee increases. We have increased cost recovery reimbursement for public works projects, so that comes in from other funds. And then we have a rightsizing of the budget for Parks and Recreation program revenues. So all coming in to have that increase there from about 14 million to 17 million. And I just wanted to note for Parks and Recreation, they've outperformed their budgeted amounts, which we've seen in the quarterly updates on the revenue side for the past two fiscal years. So we've trued those revenues up here in this charges for services category, but we also trued up the expenditures in their budget. So there isn't going to be room for them to go over their expenditures, because there'll be extra revenue. There won't be. This has a trued-up number now. So we're expecting that we will stay within those budgets, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. So this chart shows the trends for our major tax revenues. Property taxes in blue, moving upward at a consistent pace and picking up a bit for those last four years, as more properties in the Folsom Plan area are now paying property tax. We have sales taxes in red, showing that slower growth trend that I've been reporting for many years now. As we move forward into fiscal year '26 and beyond, we expect that trend to continue for sales tax. And this slide here reflects the property tax growth, broken down by area. North of 50 is in the blue, and then the Folsom Plan area in red. And you can see the past eight years, that property tax from the Folsom Plan area has gone from being about 2% of total property tax back in fiscal year '18, up to about 24% of total property tax projected for fiscal year '25-'26. This chart here reflects the city's unassigned fund balance by year in the dark blue columns, and then the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, displayed by that red line. And we're really focused here on these last three years, where we're seeing the fund balance decreasing. And the far right bar is representing fiscal year '25-'26, our proposed budget, with the proposed use of 3.5 million dollars of the unassigned fund balance in this budget. We're projecting that by the end of the fiscal year, the unassigned fund balance will be at 18.7 million, or down to 15% of expenditures. So that falls below the council's policy of maintaining a range of 17 to 20% of expenditures in your emergency reserve. So now we'll briefly go through the enterprise fund budgets. We'll go through the revenues and proposed appropriations for water, wastewater, and the solid waste funds. The proposed budget for the Water Enterprise Fund includes about 19.1 million dollars of program revenues. The proposed appropriation for operating expenses is at 18.4 million dollars, and about 1.7 million dollars of new capital expenses. So that would leave the fund with projected working capital or a cash balance of about 30 million dollars. For wastewater, we have 12.2 million dollars of program revenues, proposed appropriations at 7.5 million dollars for operations, and 1.5 million dollars for capital expenses, leaving them with projected working capital of 23 million. And then for solid waste, includes 27.9 million of program revenues, proposed appropriations of 22.8 million for operations, and 4.6 million dollars for capital expenses for vehicle replacements in that fund. And it leaves them with working projected capital of 24 million. So next up is a look at the proposed capital improvement budget for fiscal year '25-'26. The budget book that you have before you doesn't have a format for including descriptions or other informations on the capital projects right in the book, but the current approved budget requests are included in each of the funds that will be funding those projects. So I'll go through a list of some of the major projects that have current budget requests this year. This isn't anything, everything that's in the plan, but it captures most of the major projects. And the list is just in total project budget order with the largest project at the top. So you have the budget prior to fiscal year '26, so some of these are ongoing projects. And then you have the current budget requests for fiscal year '26, and then the total budget that we are proposing here for each project. So Empire Ranch Road Interchange requesting an additional 500,000 dollars, couple of water system rehab projects, storm drain ponds, water system rehabilitation project number four, Livermore Community Park asking for an additional 400,000 dollars, national pollution discharge elimination system at 700,000 dollars, and then a new project for Oak Avenue Lift Station and Force Main Project at 768,000 dollars. And the funding for these projects is primarily impact fees, enterprise funds, or grants, or special revenues. And this chart here shows the funding source for all of the proposed projects for a total of 10.7 million dollars. And you'll see that the special revenue funds, capital projects, and enterprise funds are the funding sources for this. But this chart here kind of acts as a map for you to be able to see it in the budget book. So if you were to look, for example, at Fund 412, Park Improvements, you would see in their capital outlay line item, 446,000 dollars of proposed expenditures. So here you have your proposed appropriations by fund in total for all city funds. This is what the city council's required to approve, is the appropriation by fund type. This includes the operating budget and the capital costs. The proposed budget includes the transfers out, and then the expenditures that are non-transfers out for the total in the column on the right. So for the general fund, it's 123.5 million. For enterprise funds, 57.7 million. Special revenue funds at 14.7 million. Your debt service funds at 16.8. Capital projects at 11.2. Internal service funds at 25 million, and fiduciary funds at 25 million, for a total citywide budget of 274 million. So in this final section of my budget presentation is the five-year budget forecast. We've broken this down into three major budgetary concerns that the city is facing as we move forward into the next five years. First up is the five-year forecast for general fund revenues and expenditures overall. This chart has the general fund's projected total revenues in blue on the left sides, and then projected expenditures in red for fiscal year '26-'27 through fiscal year '30-'31. And for the past few years, we've been presenting projections, looking ahead to when the city's operating expenses would begin to exceed revenues. With revenues growing at about 4% and expenditures at 5%, we projected that expenditures would exceed revenues right at this point. With a 3.5 million dollar shortfall estimated in this proposed budget, we're on track for these shortfalls to continue, and it has an estimated 6 million dollar annual shortfall projected by fiscal year '30-'31. These are projections for expenditures without a cut in services and without a recession. So this is what it would cost the city to continue to provide all the services that we're currently funding in this budget. It's a 24 million dollar shortfall over the next five years combined, if no cuts are made. So what does that mean for fund balance? Well, if no cuts are made, and there's no new revenue source coming into the city, this is the projected effect on your unassigned fund balance as you use the reserve to cover annual shortfalls. The blue bar on the far left shows your current level of fund balance as proposed in this budget. It's projected to be at 15% as a percentage of expenditures, so already below the council's minimum policy by the end of fiscal year '25-'26. Then based on projected revenue and expenditure growth, the balance starts to drop down to 12%, then 8%, and we're down to 4%, which is about 5.7 million dollars by fiscal year '28-'29, and then pretty much completely depleted by fiscal year '29-'30. And if this continued into fiscal year '30-'31, you'd have a 6 million dollar shortfall with no funding source. This does not take into account using the fund balance for any new recurring expenses that might be added. That would deplete the fund balance even faster, and it does not project a recession, which would also have an additional negative impact. The third major budgetary concern is the required CalPERS contributions. This slide here shows the projected future CalPERS contributions, and it comes from the CalPERS pension outlook tool that they provide to employers online. CalPERS puts in their current assumptions and then provides a forecast of the required contributions. So I've listed them here up through '30-'31. And the main takeaway from this slide is that total contributions for our miscellaneous plan is projected to increase from 12.9 million, which we're at for '25-'26, up to 15.3 million, and for safety, from 14.6 million to 16.8 million. So total increase for both plans combined of about 4.6 million dollars over the next six years, with most of that coming from the general fund. And it's also important to note that in this projection, CalPERS assumes payroll growth of only 2.8% per year. So if increases go over that 2.8%, then our increase, it will increase our required contributions as well. So in summary, I've used this slide for the past few years, and at one point, we were able to check three of the four boxes. Now we're down to one of the boxes this go-round. So first, the council's typically directed that we maintain the historical balance of expenditures by department. That's your pie chart, and this budget does do that, so we can check that first box. But second, as we go over to the right, unfortunately, this budget is not balanced. Our policy requires the presentation of a balanced budget, where expenditures do not exceed revenues for ongoing operations. They do exceed revenues for ongoing operations in this proposal, so that requirement is not checked. Third, the city council has a policy of maintaining a reserve equal to 17 to 20% of expenditures. This budget proposes to use a portion of the fund balance for ongoing operations, and so in doing that, it reduces the reserve below the council's policy to an estimated 15% of expenditures by the end of the year. So we can't check that box off of having reserves within the city council's approved range. And then lastly, and this is the box that's been unchecked for many years, this budget does not cover all of the city's needs. It leaves millions of dollars in infrastructure, equipment repair and replacement, and staffing needs, and many other important items unfunded. So as far as the next step for budget approval, this was the second presentation of the proposed budget, the first public hearing and first opportunity to adopt. As a reminder, the budget must be adopted by the last working day of the fiscal year, June 30th, and if the city council does not adopt the budget by June 30th, then the budget proposed by the city manager is deemed adopted. And so with that, I will turn it back over to our city manager for his closing slides.
Great. Thank you very much for that comprehensive presentation. I appreciated how it highlighted just the trends going forward and what we can look at. And so I think that's why it's important to note that, I mean, I don't think it's really hard to figure out that we can't continue to operate in this manner. You know, so with the 3.49 million dollar general fund budget, and for this fiscal year, we're really going to have to give some thought to what we do going forward. So essentially, we're not necessarily just saying, hey, adopt this budget council with the 3.5 million dollar deficit, and then hope things get better. If this budget is adopted, it really is kind of the starting point for additional work. And as I've thought about, you know, our Natoma Station Lighting and Landscape District scenario, it is actually kind of a little microcosm of what we have to do on a bigger scale. You know, so over the next several months, we'll have to have communication with the community at large, so that they can get on board and understand what we're working with, much like Natoma Station at first, like, hey, what the heck are you doing? Once we got into the numbers and showed what the outcomes are, I think it helps them understand exactly some of the things that we're going to have to look at. So over the next, actually, can we move to the next slide? Yeah, so we're going to, you know, have to aggressively pursue, you know, a strategy that reduce our costs so that we can live within our means. And so how we do that is through public outreach. How we do that is working with our departments of what does it look like in each department to reduce our service levels and kind of create a menu of options for the community to look at? And we can say, you know, much like Natoma Station, ooh, do we really want to eliminate, you know, our turf maintenance? Do we really want to do those things? And so a couple of things will happen. The community will decide, yep, we can live without those things, or they'll have to decide, you know, maybe we want to look at another revenue stream. But that basically concludes our report. We're not asking for the council to adopt the budget at this point. We're actually hoping you don't, so that we can continue the public hearing, and so that anyone who wants to can look at the budget document in its entirety. We welcome the questions. We want to answer those questions, because we really want people to come up to speed and be familiar with where we're at. Because it's really hard to get a consensus if no one agrees with the starting point. And so I think at this point, with this budget, I think we can all agree that this is where we start, and then where we end up will be a community-driven process. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kozlowski, we'll start with you.
No questions. I just was doing a little trip down memory lane, looking at our budget from 2009-10, which looks a lot like this one, because it was a similar situation. And, you know, the world is cyclical, and things come up and they come down. I'm delighted by the work that has gone into this. Thank you very, very much. It's comprehensive and clear, crisply organized, and pretty easy to read relative to city budget documents, so thank you for that. I value our new city manager's expertise in this particular area, and I'm looking forward to this process, making it so that when we are looking at that future FY '26-'27 budget, we are not spending through our reserve at anywhere near the rate that we're anticipating here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ethan?
Yeah, I'll echo Councilmember Kozlowski's comments, and I really do appreciate the work that's gone into this budget, and also the detail and the trend data that we're able to see within the individual funds. And with that, I'll move on to my questions. Just on the, you know, looking at the kind of capital projects that are in here, I know the transfers out are listed here as the 1.6 million. I can see all those going to capital projects, but I see these other cash balances that are there in the capital projects. Is there any way for me to differentiate between what's restricted and what's non-restricted within those capital projects?
Could you give me an example?
Like, we have a police capital that's 428, which has almost 2 million dollars in it, but we're not using that in order to buy the vehicles. Instead, we are creating a new fund called 607, and we're buying vehicles. So I got to assume that 428 is restricted in some way to keep us from spending the money out of there, instead of taking it out of the general fund?
Yeah, that's correct. And actually, in the next iteration of this, we're going to change the name of the capital funds, like the 601, 602 will be more like replacement fund. And so Stacy, related to the capital projects funds, the 400 level is basically developer impact fee funds that are collected for new items. It can't be for replacement items.
Got it. So anything with a 400 number, I can assume is a developer impact fee?
Exactly.
Perfect. That's what I needed to know. That was what I was not getting at of here. Any other special numbers that we should know in the hundreds, just so it kind of makes it easier to digest?
Probably. And so I think part of this process is to get it all out there, so anyone can see the fund, and we can ask those questions. And so I think what we'll do is make it clear to what is expendable for some of those deferred maintenance items, and what is just tied to development. Like Livermore Park has an additional phase being added to it. That's from a developer impact fee, but north of 50, you know, versus some of our, you know, south of 50 developer impact fees. So I think this process will be one where we can modify the titles of these and the labeling, so it's even clearer, because I think this is a powerful tool in that, are we leveraging all the dollars that we have quickly, or more quickly? Or are we pooling funds too quickly? And do we have to focus our energy on... And do we have to focus our energy on getting things designed and built differently?
And then can you address, just while we're on the police and fire equipment, we're clearly taking, we're deficit spending, right? And so I think one of the things that maybe wasn't addressed is like, hey, if I'm not able to meet my mortgage payment and my utility bills, I don't go out and buy a new car or buy some new equipment, even if I really need it, I don't have it in my budget. In this case, you guys are recommending that we go out and get some, I assume, replacement equipment for police and fire. This isn't new, like, nice to have. This is like a, oh, my goodness, we got to have this or else the wheels are going to fall off sort of equipment, and just kind of want to touch on those requests for specific equipment.
And Stacy or even Chief Cusano can talk about, the big capital is the EKG, is that what that is? Chief Cusano, would you mind talking a little bit about that? I mean, because this is a significant item, that there's a useful life for that piece of equipment, and the chief will be able to talk about that.
The real question is, is can we put it off a year? You know, if we're deficit spending.
Mayor, excellent question, Vice Mayor Rethel. The answer to that one is putting that one off is no. We currently have, I believe it's 11 EKG monitors, and these are the, this is the equipment that when we're doing advanced life support, that we hook up to your heart, we can read the rhythms and determine what kind of treatment we're going to provide. The ones that we have right now, they really have a 10-year life cycle. I believe they're either at 10 years or even 11 years, and the cost of trying to maintain them has outweighed their worth, and the current software that we're dealing with them, excuse me, is, it's not supported anymore with the Zoll company. So they've kind of, we've pushed them to the limit. These have been in the request in the budgets before this year, but now we're at kind of a critical stage, and we really have to have them to continue ALF services.
Thank you, Chief. And any more information we can get on the police? And I know Chief isn't here tonight. I could wait on that question, but I just kind of want the public to hear, like, why these are must haves, right?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. We'll have to get back on that.
Okay. The next question is, on the capital improvement plan, we've got $500,000 set aside for the Empire Ranch interchange. I know I've been beating that project, saying, hey, this is time. It's time to go on this. $500,000 doesn't get us anywhere on that project. Can we make it 8 million? What should it be? Because we're about to get CalPERS, or not CalPERS, sorry.
Caltrans.
Caltrans approval. So can we make that 8 million and actually design this interchange next year? Start designing it?
Well, I mean, I think we will be working on the design, and we will use those funds. I think we didn't allocate all the funds. We only allocated the funds that we thought we'd be able to spend, because it'll be, even the design will take multiple years to get through. And so if we expend all of those funds, since there are funds available, we would definitely come back. We would not delay the project because, oh, that's all the money we would have. We would come back with a budget amendment to the council and say, hey, good news, we were able to accelerate the design process, and we need additional funding. You know, I think we have a prudent amount in there, knowing how far we can go with the design. You know, Mr. Ryan Chance of Public Works is here. I know he's working diligently with Caltrans to do that. And as we've talked, that's something that we're going to enhance our efforts and even possibly talk about. Is there some, maybe even local or private consultants we can use to kind of expedite that process?
Thank you. And then on the, you know, to me, what I see, and I know you've been talking about this for many years, this is the sales tax is really what's hurting us more than anything. Without the growth south of 50, we would be in dire straits without that property tax, you know, the 24% of it coming in. But even with all of that growth, our sales tax has flattened. And so I'm just wanting maybe to touch a little bit on, was there any thought put into, you know, how do we get that sales tax revenue back on the right trajectory? Is there any thought to an economic development impact strategy or a focus on sales tax? I know we can say shop local until we're blue in the face, but it doesn't seem to have made much of a difference. And I was just wondering, is there, has there been any thought in how we can effectively spend some cash to maybe increase that sales tax revenue?
Sure. You know, one of the things that I think is, that we've looked at is, is looking at our areas that have, that aren't performing as much as they used to, because there's some areas of town where it used to be maybe a higher-traffic retail area, and how do we kind of reinvest in those areas? The Central Business District Vision Plan, I think, provides some ideas related to that. And then when you look at, you know, the outlets and other things, how can we work with those corporate offices to invest maybe more in those outlets to make it more like the San Francisco premium outlets? You know, those are the type of things that we'll look at. But one of the things that, just in my experience, it's really tough to overcome, is people have become really, really accustomed to shopping differently today than they have in the past, with Amazon and others, and especially as people get busy. I mean, I try to buy everything I can local, but it's really hard to avoid, you know, waking up in the morning, oh, I forgot, I need this. And if you order early enough, by the time you get home from work, it could be on your doorstep, you know? So those are some of the things that we have to adapt to, that this is our new reality. And to kind of show some of the changes with property or our sales taxes, our per capita sales tax is actually getting lower and lower and lower, because we're showing a flattening of sales tax, but we have an increase of population. I think year over year, last year, the population grew by 3,000 residents with the south of 50. So that just means on a per capita basis, we're spending less, and our sales tax revenue is suffering. So definitely more work to do. You know, I appreciated the meetings I've had with Joe Galliardi with Choose Folsom, and, you know, how do we, you know, use more data to see what areas are maybe slipping a little bit so we can have, you know, targeted meetings with them to see what it is? I appreciate Mayor Aquino's efforts to kind of reach out to our top sales tax providers. We had a really good meeting yesterday with Costco to kind of learn about what they're doing and giving us some tips of, hey, what can we do to help you increase your business? And I thought it was very, very productive, but definitely more work to be done.
All right, last one for you. You're the financial, municipal financial expert. We've got a range of 17 to 20%, and you're recommending us to go to 15%, which I think used to be our reserve target, if I remember correctly. You're comfortable with us dropping to 15% with the idea we're making changes. Where would you like to see the reserve target at long term?
So, I mean, the reserve target, I think I would be more comfortable, I mean, you could keep a reserve target, you know, between 8 and 10% if it was just the general fund reserve. If you had substantial capital funds or replacement funds, you know, but since we don't have those, I mean, the general fund reserve has basically served as that emergency capital. And so ultimately, ideally, we would see, I mean, something in this range, but we've augmented our, you know, our fleet, our facilities, our IT, our police equipment, our fire equipment, our parks. We actually have a parks replacement, you know, have a trails replacement fund, and that's something that I really appreciated in Stacy's kind of four quadrant thing. Unfortunately, there's four boxes we want to check. We're only checking one. And so the main reason for this budget is to give the community a chance to determine what do you want to fight for? What does Folsom want to be when it grows up? I mean, really, what do we want to be? Because we're at a critical juncture where pretty much every asset of any significance is at a point of, we either make some changes to fund it and improve it, or we don't do anything to it and we lose it forever, right? I mean, for a trailway, if it gets to a certain point, I actually went on a little bike ride, and I think this is an HOA area, and part of it was paved. At first, I thought it was just a dirt trail, but then as it got further, it was paved. But then it went back to dirt, and then they actually put some bark on the trail. So my point is, in that particular case, you're never getting that trail back to the paved nature that it once was. And so we're at this critical juncture, and it's my goal to present all this information to the community. Anyone who will listen, I'll go to service clubs, you know, business groups, to communicate what our actual need is, and then the community will have the decision. Do we want to invest in ourselves? Or do we want to continue where we're going? My hope is that with the information and the proper communication that, because if you just look at our neighboring cities, which are the ones that are thriving? If we look to their neighbor to the north, Roseville, I think a lot of people say, man, they got their act together. But I appreciate my colleague Kelly in Park. She sent me a report from 2018, and their report in 2018 was basically kind of like the report that Stacy showed us today. And so what they ended up doing is they passed a sales tax measure. And so I understand why the residents were concerned and voted, you know, not to approve that. But at the end of the day, if we want Folsom to become what it was, and even to become better than that, we're really going to have to look ourselves in the mirror and say, hey, are we really willing to invest in it? Because even when we come forward, I don't think we're going to like the cuts that we're going to have to propose. I mean, these are just facts. A fire station costs on an annual basis about $2.5 million to operate. Our operational budget deficit right now is 3.5 million. And so when you start cutting around the edges, it's going to be really hard to get to that 3.5 million, right? You're going to have to look at significant service program reductions, and public safety cannot be out of that. It's going to have to touch some of that, right? Even though it is our top priority, you know, because whenever we look at cuts, you'll hear, and I've heard this in my various jurisdictions where I've worked, and I don't know if I'm a glutton for punishment, but this is the third city where we have to go through kind of these type of things. And what I found is it's much better to direct it head-on, right? I mean, we've seen, if we want to try to dance around it, it's really hard and difficult to get to a place. We will continuously be frustrated, where if we actually look at the hard decisions we have to make and come to a consensus and realize that, hey, we're all in this together, I think we can come up with a message of hope, much like Roseville did. You know, in 2018, they followed a community-driven process. They asked the public what they wanted. They ended up with a sales tax measure, which has enabled them to enhance the things that were already good about it. Folsom has created a house that is very expensive. You don't add 30% open space area and not expect to pay a premium, right? When you look at, everyone loves the goats. The goats are awesome, but they're really, really expensive, right? I mean, before, we used to have the ability, and we'll look into this, is how can we use, you know, some of our folks in the prisons to help with some of the labor? That will reduce the cost, but it's not 3.5 million. And we're committed to looking at every way possible to become more efficient, looking at volunteer programs, looking at all those things. But the things that we've identified that are hard to overcome is just the natural ecosystem that's been created, which is we have, you know, retiree costs, purse costs, retiree health costs. And that's not unique to the city of Folsom, right? There's 400-plus other cities in California that are suffering from some of the same challenges. So I look forward to this opportunity, and I look at it with one for hope, because just the comments I've heard today from the folks in the Natoma Station, I think if we provide information, I mean, we have a smart, you know, really astute population that's service-minded, that they want to come together and make this community great. And that's why I wanted to come here. It's a great place. And so how can we come together, coalesce, and come up with a solution that makes it better on the other side?
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Mayor. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Roebuck?
I don't have questions as much as comments, too. I just want to say I approve of your message, City Manager. I approve of everything that you just said and your outlook for the city and the way you're building trust. Couple brief things based on what Justin, you just said. You know, we talk about sales tax going down a lot, but I think to your point about economic development, there is one way to increase sales tax, that's to increase the base that we're taxing. So I appreciate the conversations I've had as well with Brian and my colleagues and the businesses in the city, how to revitalize and how to kind of improve our processes so we can attract more businesses that fit within Folsom and increase that base. The second thing is, that was a great question and answer about the 400 items, like, the number 400 means something. I think it would be great in the future, in the budget, in the finalized budget, to have an asterisk if that, if there is consistencies like that, like, all 400 is impact fees. So for when the resident, you know, someone who's not sitting here listening on the dais reads the budget, they see the asterisks or a headline or some, what did you call it?
A key.
Yes, perfect. I think that would be great consistently throughout, because one of the feedbacks, and I, I'll talk about this in a minute, is reading the budget in the past has been really difficult, so that would help. You know, Stacy and I, you and I have had a lot of conversations at budget time, and I just, I know that this has taken a lot of time to redo it and kind of present it in a different way. And as Brian said, manually enter things. I just want to say how much I appreciate all your work and effort. This is, I am so happy, I'm not happy about the situation we're in, but I'm very much, very happy about how we can read it, how we can access the information, how you presented the numbers. The numbers matched the previous numbers, and that's very comforting, and it builds trust. And then with explanation of why those things were different, if they were different at all. So I greatly appreciate that. It does build trust, and I think it builds trust within the community as well. So I just want to give you a special shout out, that I appreciate that. It's, you know, it's, I have a small little question, but I'm going to wait and ask it tomorrow, just kind of a number. So I appreciate using the actual expenses the last couple of years to come up with the estimate of our expenses going forward. It's a much more reliable report, and unfortunately, that means, you know, we had some, it looked like we had some growing pains this year in the presentation, but just like with the Natoma Station and our LNLs, the more transparent that we can be of actually where we're at, the more understanding, it's not what we want or where we want to be, but having the community have that trust and understanding allows us to all go forward, and it's just kind of what I'm piling on what Brian already said. So I appreciate the transparency of this. Two future things, I really appreciate that we're presenting the problem that we have right now, but also we're going to be talking about potential solutions. So we're going to be able to, the staff is going to be able to bring things. If we do this, here's, you know, here's one of the solutions, and this is the consequence of that. And that's really where we should be, is what decisions do we make to take action? So I know Brian and I talked about this briefly a couple of days ago, and, you know, we can be presented with a problem all day long, but if there are no presenting of any solutions, then, you know, where do we go from there? So I'm super excited, not again, about that we're in a deficit, but I'm excited that we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and it is going to come to us, because that's why we were elected. And with your feedback, hopefully, we make the right ones for our future. And then also, council priorities, I felt very much supported, and I was allowed to articulate any concerns, ask questions, but also priorities that I have in the budget. And it was a much different process, and I just really appreciate that. So the future, I love, Brian, that you're going to bring back September, October, that the council can get together and really kind of work through some of these tough decisions and really decide as a whole, what are our priorities and what are our core competencies and what are we going to focus on? So I just really appreciate the future process as well. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Leary?
Oh, I want to thank Stacy for answering the 20-something questions I sent to you after the meeting we had with Brian last week. This is my first time through a complicated budget process. I've sat in the audience and watched what happened before, and there's a lot to it. I think this has made it simpler. There's still a lot I need to learn, so I appreciate Councilmember Rethel's, you know, questions and some of, outlining some of his goals. I, you know, when I was looking at this, the questions for me came up about how do we resolve some of these issues, such as some cities contract out their solid waste services, you know? And I'm not sure if that, I think that that comes out of an enterprise fund, but is, are there any savings in doing that with any kind of services that the city is currently employing people to perform? And I'm not asking, we have a list right now, but I think that's one of the things that we can look at down the line. It was actually surprising to see that the TOT taxes remained flat, and I think that's something, you know, that we can work on. It was nice that we have a new hotel coming to town, but it won't be online. a new hotel coming to town, but it won't be online for a little, a little bit. And, you know, actually, you know, some of the goals you talked about, like improving the look of the outlets and use of those, you know, we have two, actually, the outlets and the Palladio are actually good revenue producers. I see the new medical facilities coming in here is helping to increase the income for the city, hopefully, with new residents and people who will actually use our restaurants and buy things in town. But yeah, it's complex, and there aren't simple, there isn't one solution. Solutions aren't simple. And again, harkening back, as we've all done to the Natomas Station thing, and that's asking our residents to invest in our community and how we can do that. And I would love to say that we can rely on entirely volunteer staff to do a lot of this work, but I think that we can do some, but I think it's unrealistic for certain tasks that take people who are trained and certified in doing these things. So it's a complicated problem. And and I'm also looking forward to hearing back from you and Stacy about some of these funds that appeared to be unused for a number of years and finding out if if those funds, which I didn't add them all up, but it looks like if they could be used for purposes for which they maybe weren't first intended but aren't restricted, that that would help go a long ways to resolving some of the the issues and maybe being able to take less money out of the reserve funds. Again, thank you both so much for your work.
Thank you. I will also echo the thanks to Stacy and Adam. I know you guys are still reeling from the loss of Terry Hemley a couple of years ago, and now the retirement of John Donahue. So you're doing, doing a lot of this work with with less help. So we really, really appreciate this. I do just have a couple of questions. On page 10, about halfway down, in general fund revenues, it talks about facility rentals. And when you look back to 2019, 2020, we go all the way from 3,925 to a high of 13,764 in 2223. This year, it looks like we're or for next year, projecting 91,800. And I'm just wondering why we're projecting such a jump?
Let me see if I'm on the right page here. You said page 10, facility rental?
Page 10, yeah, about halfway down.
And you're saying the jump is going up?
Yeah, I mean, like, it looks like the average the last couple of years, maybe $12,000, and now we're projecting 91,800.
I'll have to get back to you on that. The department's helped with the revenue projections, so I will check with them and see if there was something different specifically for that.
I mean, this is a great question, and this is what we want is because the revenue projections actually are very critical to our success. Because if we build revenue projections, our departments can actually, and I've seen the scenario where our departments do an excellent job of living within their means on the expenditure side, but because we overestimated the revenues, we actually still lose. Right? I mean, and so.
Actually, I do know what this is. This is the new rental agreement that we have under the parking garage. So once they start paying for their lease, it will go into that line item.
Okay, okay, good, good.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, let's see. So just to make sure kind of we're all using the same terminology. So when you talk about true ups, essentially, you're not proposing any new ongoing general fund expenditures for next year. You're just basically budgeting what we have been spending, and that accounts for that additional $3 million. Yeah.
That's correct.
Which is, you know, look, you know, let's be honest about what we're doing, and that's, you know, we got to do that in order to to improve, right? But are you considering any? I mean, if we wanted to pursue some cuts for this next year now instead of waiting a year, I mean, I know just some things that, you know, certainly will not make a dent in the budget, but some of the things that we've been talking about are eliminating the attendant at the skate park. We've talked about single role in the fire department. I mean, are we?
We will continue to explore all those. In fact, I don't know, Kelly, if you can talk a little bit about, I think, the attendant at the skate park is already underway.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Kelly, if you can give an update on that.
While she's coming down, we're still putting $500,000 aside next year for the retiree health trust fund?
Correct, that is included.
Okay.
So Mayor, City Councils, Kelly Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Director. So you will be seeing a staff report coming at the next city council to recommend eliminating staffing. We are, which would be a reduction of approximately $40,000. Based on feedback from the community, we will be asking for an appropriation to change our lighting to automatics, so to convert it to Musco, so we don't have to have staff that turn it on and off, but we can program it. But that will be coming at the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Again, not the answer to our question, but.
Right. But the reality is, I mean, we're going to scour everything. As we look through this budget document and identify different funds, I've mentioned this in other things, we'll bring an item to the council. This is not going to save the operational budget. But if there's ways to look at, for example, we have the housing fund that has, you know, $20 million in, and how can we reimburse the general fund, you know, that sold at a discount, the Percifer lots for Habitat for Humanity? So we'll have an item coming. You know, I think we sold it for 15,000. We have an assessed value of 650,000. So that would be 635,000 that I would recommend we put into general fund capital because we don't want to put, you know, one time revenues into an ongoing expense. But that will help in a variety of ways. And we're hoping to find all those. It's not going to be, you know, the magical cure to our situation, but every little bit helps.
Right, good. Okay, thank you. And just to kind of follow up on the questions and the comments from earlier, you know, like I committed during my State of the City address, we're reaching out to the top 25 sales tax producers because I think the most important thing is retain the businesses we have, right? And see how we can maybe help them increase their sales and their revenue, which in turn helps the city. So we did have a really good meeting yesterday with Costco. We got one with Walmart set up, and then I'm reaching out to you all so that you can meet with the top 25 sales tax producers in your districts, just to make sure that, you know, we are, we let them, first of all, know that we're we happy to have them here in Folsom and thank them for doing business, but because they are really important to the health of the city. So anyway, I don't believe we have any requests to speak on this side. We have one? Okay. Would you like to call that person?
Madam Mayor, if I may request.
Oh, yes, I will open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, what, a request from Sharon Kendall to speak?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we have no requests to speak, and I will close the public hearing. But we are, do you need a motion or are we able to continue this item into the next meeting, or do we?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So assuming everybody's in agreement that we're going to let this go one more time so that the public has an opportunity, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this item.
Second.
Perfect. We have a motion and multiple seconds. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raithel?
Yes.
Warba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you. City Manager reports.
Okay, just a couple of brief items. First, want to provide an update on the water pipeline project. About 31% of Folsom's water infrastructure project is now complete. This improvement will benefit more than 25,000 residential, commercial, institutional, and industrial connections, ensuring the system can meet current and future demands. If you want to learn more about that project, you can go to folsom.ca.us/newwatermain, or you can call 916-222-4824. And then just as an advisory, watch, we're encouraging folks to watch for scam emails posing as city staff. A recent scam involved fake emails impersonating Folsom planning staff and requesting wire transfers. These messages may look official but are not legitimate. City staff will never ask for wire transfers or use non-city email addresses. If you're unsure about a message, contact the Planning Division at 916-461-6202. On the public safety front, you know, our police department continues to to just do really good work related to trying to attack the fentanyl issue. And so this is kind of a historic ruling. Ruslan Kochkin has been sentenced to 10 years in state prison after pleading guilty to voluntary manslaughter for supplying the fentanyl that caused the fatal overdose on Sutter Street in January 2024. This marks the first conviction in Sacramento County for providing fentanyl to another person that directly resulted in their death. The Folsom Police Department Special Investigations Unit led the case, gathering evidence that connected Kochkin to the fatal dose. He was later arrested in possession of fentanyl and methamphetamine. This conviction sends a clear message. Drug dealers will be held accountable for the deadly consequences of their actions. And then rail safety reminder, see tracks, think train, following recent crashes near Folsom Boulevard where drivers went around lowered crossing gates. SACRT is reminding everyone to stay alert and obey rail safety laws. Trains are quiet, fast, and take nearly 600 feet to stop. Never try to beat a train. It's not worth the risk. Big thank you to everyone who was involved with the wildfire preparedness open house. It was, I think, a big success. Reminder about our summer concert series starts Friday. Folsom Summer of Music Concert Series kicks off this Friday, June 13 at Lyons Park with Adam Aldama and the Aces. Enjoy free live music from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., food trucks, and fun every other Friday through July. Follow Folsom Parks and Rec for updates. And that concludes, oh, well, actually, this is important. Team Liberty wins Battle of the Badges. Congratulations to Team Liberty, Folsom PD, for winning this year's Battle of the Badges blood drive. While the trophy heads back to the police department, the real impact comes from every donor who stepped up to give blood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kozlowski?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Raithel?
No further comments this evening. Thank you all for coming out.
Councilmember Warba?
Just quick, I just want to thank Mayor Aquino for opening up her home a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago. It was a great event. My husband had a great time talking to your husband especially, and a few others. And it was really a nice, I just really appreciate you opening your home and kind of creating that atmosphere. So it was for the executive management team, spouses, kids, and we got to meet Brian's family as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary?
I agree. That was lovely, Ron. You could, you could start a new business in a matter of time out of your home. But yeah, I want to thank staff again. I mean, your help has been invaluable in getting through a lot of these really challenging issues, you know, including the Natomas Station, L&L thing, the budget. And I want to wish happy birthday to our communications director, Christine, who's been doing a wonderful job and I think will help us gear up to educate the public on on some of these hot button issues. I did enjoy visiting the new UC Davis facility the other day. It's my alma mater and my former employer. And they've got a beautiful new facility here in Folsom. And then the Marriott Hotel, sort of groundbreaking beyond when they've already put the framing up, at least for the four stories. Both of those facilities, Councilmember Raithel and I were on the planning commission, and I'm proud to say we made great decisions there in approving both of those facilities. So I just want to add one other thing, and that's Community Service Day requests are still open and encouraging people in Natomas Station to sign up for the ones we have posted there and encourage other members of the public to sign up for Community Service Day projects throughout the city. They're a critical piece of bringing people together and getting a lot of work done in one day. Thanks.
Thank you. I just have two quick things. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week, I attended the GSAC Board Retreat, Greater Sacramento Economic Council. Lots of speakers, lots of panels. I would say the thing that was the most relevant to us here in Folsom, a gentleman by the name of Bob Hess, who works for New Mart. He is an expert in site selection for 30-plus years. He has helped companies figure out where they want to go, including he helped Kikeman come to Folsom 25-plus years ago. GSAC has retained him to do kind of a reverse site selection process, if you will, basically figure out what the Sacramento region needs to do in order to be more attractive to semiconductor companies, those in the EV battery field, that sort of thing. The city of Folsom is contributing to that effort. But anyway, he spoke, and I just wanted to share a couple of things. He said the top site fact, top site fat, top site factors, I don't know, I can't read this, energy costs and availability, sites and land availability, availability, and permitting speed slash certainty. And I was looking at our, our website, talking about economic development stuff. I think we need to beef it up in terms of some of the, you know, smud versus PG&E, some stuff about education and stuff. He also said this, where does R&amp;D flourish? Areas with strong research and development are fueled by talent and innovation. In turn, these thrive in ecosystems with exceptional educational infrastructure, impactful quality of place, and in cultures where there is a high degree of civic pride, which I think sounds a lot like Folsom. The other thing I wanted to say is the Sacramento region recently attained compliance with the 2008 ozone standard. I know that seems like it took us 17 years to do it, but we were in severe non-attainment. And so, yes, it takes years or decades to, to, you know, come into compliance with that by policies and programs and all that sort of stuff. The Air District, I sit on that board, is planning a kind of a ceremony to announce that, probably in August or September, and it's probably going to be at the air monitoring station that's right here behind City Hall, so I'll let you know. But we can literally breathe easier knowing that we have met the ozone attainment standard. So with that, it's 9:17, and we are adjourned. Thank you.